Sound check, one, two, three. It came through? Okay. Serious that you heard it. It definitely came through. I just remember we did this last time and the one gentleman from BRCA went through like half a speech and no one could hear.
We're going to begin the board meeting. This is the February twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five New Garden Township Board of Supervisors meeting. All rise for the pledge of allegiance. The board held an executive session at six fifteen prior to this meeting tonight. Next item on the agenda is public comment, so we have Suzanne Palma. Suzanne, do you want to come up and speak at the microphone?
Yes, hi. Is this on?
Yes.
So my, what I wanted to speak about was the the building of a minimum thousand-seat arena on property that's, looks like it's Southwood and Limewood Roads. I understand and have heard in previous meetings that we're looking at ways to raise revenue for the township, including development of commercial properties. And I understand there's a need for additional income for the town. However, I think that when you consider ideas to raise revenue, the last thing you should consider are things, are projects that will bring harm to township residents. And I believe that this project would certainly bring harm to the residents in the local area. I'm a resident of Somerset Lake. The community Harrogate is also my neighboring development. Yeah.
Sorry. We're going to move into a hearing, which is about the adoption of the zoning ordinance amendment. I think that's what you were directing this to.
Okay.
If you want it, and I'm not trying to stop you, I'm just saying.
No, that's fine. If there's a different time during the meeting, I can speak, I would do it then.
It'll be in a couple of minutes, but it, we move from, this meeting will recess and we'll go into the hearing. And that hearing's for the purpose of receiving public comment about the ordinance amendment. And you're speaking to sort of pass the amendment, and you're certainly free to do that. I just wanted to let you know, we are going to move into a hearing about the amendment.
Okay, that's fine. I'll reserve my comments for then. Thank you.
Thanks.
We also have Ron Lupo. Ron, did you want to talk about zoning or some other topic?
Well, in the past, I'm here again with tired story of H2S approach. I'm sure you're tired of hearing it. I'm tired talking. But until something gets done, I'll keep talking. Let's face it, nothing has been done. It seems the Ford Fly gets more attention. And it obviously easier to control, possibly that's why it gets more attention. But right now, I had a third incident in our neighborhood with propane feed line through a home, all corroded. Didn't be old, old news really, but it needs to be. Serious problem that doesn't seem to be, you know, it's taken lightly by many, many people, and I just can't understand why. It's a dangerous gas, Ford Fly's just bacteria. We're talking about a dangerous gas here that can, could be volatile, it could kill people, one way or another. So it took only one meeting at the Kennet Township with the mayor there, Kennet, and then everybody jumped. Ford Fly became, oh my, that was priority. We've been here seven years talking about our problem, I see nothing but apathy. So, in fact, our state senator, our state senator and our representative have only been in this building twice. Once, they sat there and said nothing. The other time when the professor was here, they barely said anything. What they did say was inconsequential to anything. Now, in my neighborhood, I just spoke to the new neighbor that moved in today, or they moved in last week or so. But they were totally unaware of what they were getting into. Because when they looked at the house, the trees, bam, had foliage. They couldn't see those great holding ponds back there that create this problem. The day they moved in is when they found the problem, because the air smelled so bad, she was almost crying. She said it was burning her nose. You know, all I could do is empathize with them. What can you tell them? Because there is no disclosure, real estate-wise, in selling a home, because it's never been mandated as a problem. But it is a problem. You know, and so at this point, you know, since we've gotten apathy from our local people in Harrisburg, I'm making contacts with people in Washington. State senators, I think, I think Fetterman, McCormick. Maybe they ought to know what the state isn't doing, and they represent the state on a federal level. But anyway, I can only say, I'm in the, and really, when you look around here in good conscience, take a deep breath and take a good look. Do you really think this township's ever going to grow by, look at its surroundings. You got mushroom farms that are falling down. You got filthy streets. Corporations come into areas where they can, they want their people to live, have, the only thing that is an asset to this area is the school district. But that's not enough to draw a good corporation here, because they want good neighborhoods, good places for people to live, their employees. I don't see that here. Take a good deep breath, like I said, in good conscience, drive around here, see what you think. If you were, never had been here before, you'd say, I want to get the hell out of here. Thank you.
Michael Murphy, your name is next. Do you, are you going, do you want to talk about zoning or? Okay, then, why don't you wait. Sam, are you the same thing, Sam Stanton? Okay, you can, you can speak. Yep. Yep, we can do it now. Yep. We have public comment on agenda items also.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pick up the trash along that embankment, now just questioning whether it will really help the site distance or not. But I think that embankment shaving would be helpful toward whatever the end project is going to be for a left turn lane into New Garden Hills. I think this would be a good first step for that. I think that Bowman has their study that we've been looking at where they have a entrance kind of like Chatham has, where they have the center island with the sign, but they have it situated west of the seven and forty-one intersection. And I had made a comment that maybe it would be better placed nearer to New Garden Hills to slow traffic down there. Because as traffic rounds that turn and comes into the intersection, we have a lot of accidents, because there's no sign there telling traffic to slow down. There's no alert or anything. As much as we want traffic to go in and out of New Garden Hills, it'd be nice to slow it down there. And then you also have that five-acre lot that's for sale, that's been for sale for some long time. And I'm not sure what the future that is. Likely the entrance to that property, if it's going to be developed, is going to be off of old limestone. So looking at the whole picture, I see that this is just a kind of a topical or a very slight shaving of that embankment. And just question whether, I understand there's a hundred thousand dollar grant that's going to be used for this, and the other money's coming out of the open space fund. And that's about my comment. Just, it seems like not enough is done there, but maybe in the future, there'll be a left turn lane or an island with a left turn lane behind it. Thank you.
We have Mary Dupont. Mary, did you want to talk about the zoning? Okay, and then we have Margaret. Good re, good zee? Okay, thank you. So at this point in the meeting, we're going to recess the Board of Supervisors meeting, and we're going to open up the hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Winnie, who's going to take the lead.
Thank you very much. This is a hearing to receive public comment, sorry, how's this? This is a hearing to receive public comment on an amendment to the zoning ordinance. I'd like to put certain things into the record. Proof of publication is Exhibit One. Exhibit Two is the, are the comments a summary of the comments of the New Garden Township Planning Commission. Exhibit Three are the comments from the Chester County Planning Commission. The New Garden Township Planning Commission supported very much the amendment, the proposed amendment. The Chester County Planning Commission went over the amendment in great detail, and most of their comments were really not about the intention of adding this to this place, but were about the technical aspects of the ordinance amendment. And I'd like to just go over the amendment. I'm sure, given everybody who's here, you're all familiar with it. We add a definition of a stadium. The ordinance previously did not have one. And as I'm sure you know, the law, when you don't define something and you don't provide a place for it, is that it can go anywhere, and there are no restrictions. So what this ordinance does is actually create a definition for stadium and then say where it can be. And it can be in the C-one commercial district, and there are design standards concerning the construction. And it also can be in the Unified Development District. So that's, and the ordinance allowed that use in both those districts. Previously, in the Unified Development District, a hotel was a conditional use, and that would be before the Board of Supervisors. Conditional uses are expensive for township. They cost a lot of money to go through the process for the township. So that got moved to a permitted use in that unified zone. And then there are design standards about entrances and the number of folks. So that's the presentation of the content of the ordinance, and we know there are a lot of people here who have public comment about it. What we need for you to do, so you can identify yourself, is come forward and state your name. We'll take as long as it takes before we go back to the meeting. And if you have questions, obviously, we're here to answer those questions. So if there's anybody who.
Do you want me to go through?
Yeah, Chris can go through some slides that he has that might be helpful and may answer some of your questions.
Just making sure the screen share is coming in for residents watching online right now. There we go, alright. Perfect. Alright, well, good evening, members of the board, residents, staff, Chris Heims, Township Manager. In light of some, I guess, interest publicly that started ramping up this afternoon, and this is part of a kind of an ongoing discussion the township has been having probably since nineteen ninety-eight, about what the intentional use is for this kind of unified district. Figure we'll provide some of the kind of clarifying information about some inconsistencies or maybe some misconceptions about what we're actually trying to perform here as an act of active or proactive economic development facilitation for the property, which synonymous Unified District and White Clay Point kind of go hand in hand. And I don't think that's kind of surprising to most folks with some understanding about the history of the property. But nonetheless, it's deserving of that in this moment in time, so I'll just kind of quickly walk through it, not to sponge up too much time and allow for public comment, but hopefully this will provide some clarifying details. But overall, you can't start anything without the understanding that since about the summer timeframe of twenty-twenty-three, we went through our state of the township process and kind of started recognizing a lot of the issues. And the one kind of comment prior to this about some of the economic condition issues and financial constraints for the township has been also trying to set up priorities of what we should be trying to do to combat that. And of course, a big part of it is, is not to increase our tax rate, but to increase our tax base. And White Clay Point and the Unified District serves as a significant portion of that, because it's the largest collective contiguous land site in the one part of the township. It's the most prime for economic development interest, but what type of development? Another one too is, is if you're talking about it from a function of a potential, we'll call it like a recreation use, in this case, sports tourism type of use. It's not to say that it's going to happen, but at least it allows for that type of function in that site, so you can activate not just the overall ancillary development around it to incentivize developers to come to the table to actually buy the site, because right now it doesn't have a buyer, still owned by JP Morgan with no interest. And two, to build what they can build enough as an incentive to be able to complete the project to get the revenues that you dearly need here as a township. And then three, the one thing that's not necessarily talked to, but I'll kind of jump to it, ratable taxes as it comes through to a function of economic development. So right now, when you build a housing sub-development, you get Act five-eleven revenue, which is primarily earned income tax, and you get property taxes, which for us as a township at three-point-one-seven mils is not significant about in comparison to schools, which is at going over thirty-three mils. So we also have the ability to scale amusement tax and potentially hotel tax, because you're talking about regional attraction of co-located anchoring functions on a site. So it's the biggest bang for your buck and a very condensed site that you can do. So this isn't just us wanting to do this, this is across the board nationally in terms of the highest and best use for areas of land in your municipality. Some other things that we're hoping to kind of solve for, for the actual site, because it is mixed use. If you think Unified District, just think of it as a mixed-use site. It's to kind of support for anchoring in additional housing units within the township. We're at a significant dearth of available units in the township, and of course, that has compounding issues, not only for supply-demand, for attainability and availability, but also attracting new families to the township. We actually have an area of concern right now for future school patronage, and actually is going down in school-aged children in the township, so that's another issue is just looking for that next wave of potential families coming here and choosing New Garden Township as a place to not only just live, but also potentially work and play. Another one is just jobs creation, so everything tends to cluster around each other. So you're looking for those kind of catalyst-type functions to say, if you build it here, you're going to have that continued catalytic function, and where do you want that to happen? So it's been the township intent through corridor studies for our state highways and systems that run through the township. So along Route forty-one, and along Baltimore Pike, and along Newark Road, which are all state-owned Pennsylvania roads, is having that wave, if you will, but just having that type of economic development expansion along those corridors improves those corridors, allows for better kind of corridor, we'll call it expansions, from left to right. And as of the twenty-eighteen comprehensive plan, excuse me, the number one priority of the township is to enhance Route forty-one. So you can't enhance Route forty-one without this type of catalytic function, excuse me, catalytic function for the for the actual beginning part of the corridor there, right around the Route seven interchange. Which also, and I don't know how people are familiar with the incentivization for PennDOT, but that's a big part of this. PennDOT just doesn't come and fix issues of infrastructure in any locality. They need to be driven by justification and demand. So that's one where driving highest and most kind of best use in a specific site drives PennDOT to the table. So that's a big part of, otherwise this township would be very limited at what it could actually do to improve Route forty-one in that corridor. So real quick, we'll talk about Unified District zoning, and we're not making this up. This is out of chapter two-hundred. It's been in the Township Code for decades. What is the outcome and vision and goal for this entire kind of contiguous site that is zoned as a unified district? And then with that, just because zoning is one thing, what is the commercial market feasibility for even getting that built in the first place? And two of those have to kind of align to each other. So even for tonight's redist, excuse me, amendment to the district, which is permitting by right these types of uses, does your market even justify the demand for building that here in the first place? And that's kind of where both of these need to come together. But with that, the intent and, excuse me, the intent behind the site overall is to provide kind of a enhanced gateway to the township in of itself. It's the first thing that you drive through when you come through New Garden Township. What are you experiencing as you're driving through? Right now, it's a dilapidated former compost tipping facility site, and that's pretty much it. So if you're overall not familiar with it, I'll kind of quickly go with some of the issues, and actually, we can probably jump in front of this, but this isn't to say that this is along Southwood. I think that was probably a misconception. We're talking about frontage right along Route forty-one. That's where this development overall has kind of been, understanding of this contiguous site, where I think even as of late as twenty-eighteen, there was a planned, we'll call it conceptual sketch plan by JP Morgan that had some kind of mixture of use between residential and commercial spaces on the site. It's still the same. None of that has changed. This is just saying that in order to facilitate getting people back to the table from a development and acquisition standpoint, what are we, what are we still restricting that could be seen as a possible barrier to entry for people to get interest in the site in and of itself? So you're removing the township as kind of a firewall. Sure. Oh, yeah, sorry. So if you're Somerset Lake, you're down here. If you're Harrogate, you're not there, you're off of Route seven, off of Southwood Drive. This is like Brittany Hills, the Township building is right here, this is Hartfield, this is Route forty-one through that, this is St. Rocco's, and there's your Sunnydale Road right there. So we're not talking about Route seven entry and access ways on Southwood Drive at all on this. So everything talking about this site, primary gateway entrance is right off of Route forty-one, if that makes sense. So right now, it's about contiguously, because it includes the area across the street. It's about a hundred and eighty acres usable components of the site. We'll call it less than that because of the topography there. It's a very difficult site. It was formerly owned by Priot, which had had some sort of concept to put like a million-plus square feet of commercial big-box retail on the site alone. That's not happening. That's not what this is about. But it switched over as a part of a Priot sale of properties, distressed assets in their portfolio, and of course, JP Morgan kind of got caught with this last component of the asset. And for JP Morgan, you know, a corporation of their size and magnitude to really have like a kind of, in this case, a business interest to doing anything here other than eventually selling to whatever bidder comes across that's interested in doing it, it'll continue to sit like that. So this is one where, as a township, we need to provide some semblance of a, like a marketability and incentivization about putting the biggest and highest and best-use things on that site, whatever that might be. In order to catalyze acquisition of the site, to be able to build out the site, if that makes sense. So then last but not least, and then we can get into the public comment time. And once again, to iterate, because I did see some comments, there is no planned land development application at all for the site. This is basically an application of a strategy for the township. Two, kind of the, I'll call it the, not necessarily even assumed issues, but the actual infrastructure issues on the site are across the board. You're talking about existing lack of sewer on the site, especially to anchor in the amount of potential connections and EDU capacity required for the site. It's not there. The stormwater components, granted, if you build it out in this kind of like green space, kind of UD vision, it will be less than what it would have been with the big-box retail, which would have been pretty much carte blanche, impervious surface over the course of the entire site. Then you also, you have to solve for the fact that they have to do the structural improvements along Route forty-one. So you're talking about big infrastructure improvements in all phases, and that's one where if you're also restricting the ability to even get the project approved, most people will just, you know, hey, this isn't worth it, I'm not going to go there. I'm not going to invest money to then have it be kind of, we'll call in this case, die through the land development process. I'm going to go somewhere else. And part of right now, one of our, two of our biggest competing markets as a township to anchor in future growth is more like, you know, Maryland, Cecil County, Elton, and then of course, down in Lower Delaware. So I'm not going to read off the rest of the slide, but there are a bunch of reasons for why we're trying to facilitate this, and the biggest one is to enhance our revenues. The one lady beforehand said it pretty well. The township is essentially trying to anchor in new revenue streams to functionally support, we'll call it a replacement of our existing infrastructure, primarily our road program, as well as our bridges and culverts in the township. We're trying to continue to support and fund our public safety apparatus right now, which is primarily around the Southern Chester County Regional Police and Avondale Fire Company as the biggest percentages of our township budget. Then of course, if you're going to be able to do it for economic development, put it along a corridor where it kind of facilitates some of the things that you want to do anyway, which in this case, a lot of it is, excuse me, centered around enhancing Route forty-one. So how do you do that? How do you achieve an initiative that you don't even govern the actual roadway in of itself? And through the development process, that's kind of the number one way to get that completed. So I'll leave it there. These are kind of the reasons for why, and I guess, open it up for the public hearing comments.
Alright, so now's the time for public comment again, if you don't mind lining up and telling us your name. I don't think there's a time limit. I guess we just always ask if everybody's saying the same thing. You can just say what he said. Whatever. We'll let you go as long as you want. Hi, Suzanne Palma again. Thanks, Chris, for some of that information. I, I don't see why we need to include an arena as something that is not a conditional use. I would want to make sure that the environmental impact to Somerset Lake is not significant. We do a lot of expenditure in our community to keep our waterway clean and the surrounding vegetation cared for. Stormwater runoff is an important issue for us. And, you know, and we also have to maintain our own roads, because the township doesn't recognize some of our major roads that are cut-throughs for the town as township roads. So we spend a lot of money on our roads too. My concern is, if we have an arena. My concern is, if we have an arena that is near our community, where our community roads are going to be cut-through again, that if there's no ability to have conditional approval, then that's the problem because it means that the building could really significantly impact our community. And I restate that I would prioritize other projects that, that if there was an unconditional use, or you don't have to have that conditional use, that this, that the impact, the potential impact to communities would be much less. Prioritize the residents and their needs over anything else. I know money is an issue, but the impact for a commercial property such as an arena next door to developments, that can bring the property values down significantly and cost them like your $530,000 average home value, 20, 25% impact on those values. So that's like $130,000 tax per household. That's not something that I think you want to inflict on us, and I ask that you don't.
Good evening. My name's Margaret Goodzeit, and I also live in Somerset Lake. As a retired attorney and judge, I disagree with the comment that the county planning commission's comments are technical. I think they are more than that. They are comments that are meant to protect the best interests of New Garden residents wherever they may live. And I would like to point out, some of them, they're in the letter, but what the, what the county commission is saying is that prior to taking action on this amendment, certain things have to be addressed. And I don't know if it's your intention to vote on the amendment as it's written tonight, but if it is, that's doing a disservice to New Garden Township residents. One of the things that they say is that the township should consider a maximum-size threshold on an arena above which conditional use approval will be required. It should just not be whatever somebody wants to build. There should be some limitation before additional consideration is required. Another example is the township ordinance as written states that an environmental impact study, traffic impact study, community impact study, and historical research impact analysis are required for an application in the Unified Development District for any tract in excess of five acres. They're recommending that the township require these studies for a stadium/arena development in both districts, not just the Unified District. And they don't say that it has to be over five acres, but it is ambiguous. They're also saying that as part of this amendment process, the township should examine the adequacy of the existing area and bulk requirements in both districts, along with all applicable design standards for a stadium/arena. For example, they say that there should be, buffer screening requirements should be looked at, particularly pertaining to commercial development adjoining residential zoning districts, along with lighting and noise requirements. Design standards for outdoor stadium lighting should be part of this amendment. They're also suggesting the township attorney should look at it and make sure it complies with all other requirements. My point being that the county planning commission has set forth certain recommendations, which I strongly suggest be taken into consideration and dealt with and included in any zoning ordinance amendment before a vote is taken. So additional work, I believe, should be taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Vince Mancino. I just moved here two months ago. And the reason why I'm pointing that out is where I came from, they built three hotels, converted many buildings, told us that our ratables were going to bring our taxes down, and it never occurred because they used the ratables as increase for the township employees and all the employees that worked for the township. So, and for a five-year program, we got no tax relief as far as we got a tax increase. And as, as I speak, they're still building. It's an old General Motors plant and the Jet Propulsion Center, which is right, I lived in Ewing Township. So I just want to clarify that if all these are going to be ratables, sometimes, there's always a loophole where the ratables go someplace else besides the people. So I just want to make clear that the people will get a little bit of the pie if this goes through. Okay? Thank you very much.
Just want to make clear, I'm speaking as a resident tonight, not my employer. But yeah, speaking to the same thing, the six recommendations that were made by the Chester County Planning Commission, I think are all very reasonable. Oh, sorry about that. I support the six recommendations that the Chester County Planning Commission noted as well in their report. I know some of them probably already covered within the zoning ordinance, like requiring a traffic impact study, but I'd love if you guys could speak to it before you vote on it. But I just want to point out that the conditional use approval process, I know it is expensive for the township, but I feel like a stadium and potentially hotels are case-in-point, like one of the most impactful things that could be built in a township, and I feel like it's, you know, purpose-built for a conditional use approval. Referencing back to when Mr. Flores's Event Barn was approved, you know, he had to go through the conditional use approval process. Couple of conditions were placed, including, you know, limiting the number of people within the venue, hours of which that they could have noise going past the property lines, whatnot. I think if we choose to avoid the conditional use approval process, we need to make sure we do put some conditions on this and not just a blanket use-by-right, I think is. But yeah, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
My name is Peter Rosensky. I just found out about this yesterday. Can you explain what it is, this stadium? It's a thousand-seat stadium. Who's going to play there? What's going to happen?
I think this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, so it's not really specific to any particular stadium.
It does say something about a thousand seats.
Yes, it does.
So what do you, okay, what do you anticipate this being used for? If it's in the, if it's in...
For a stadium that's got...
For what?
I think, I think Chris just went through a lot of...
Yeah, so...
He went through general commercial development. I want to know what the stadium is going to do. And you say there's going to be a hotel next to the stadium. There could be. I'm sorry.
No, it could be that. I mean, the zoning ordinance is just a permissive document. It isn't, it isn't, this is going to happen, this is, this could happen. That's all.
I'm sorry. I do understand that. I'm asking you, though, you must have something in your mind that you think you need to change the zoning requirements to allow this. What is it?
Yeah. So a part of this ongoing economic development initiative, and it was even part of the 2018's kind of planning document that was provided by J.P. Morgan, was for, what would be viable for, would be like a youth sports kind of recreation facility. That was part of the actual site plan concept that was brought forward, and because of the kind of element of the parameters around that, that would be defined through this type of function. So if we're actively looking to try to see if that's something that could be conducted here, and it's already been out in the open as a possible use, then this would be part of that. This would be allowing for that type of functional use on the property that would be a commercial anchor to get developers to the table, to be able to build out other associated commercial that we're seeking. And it's one where if it's been out there in the public kind of lexicon as a possibility, and right now, we're just putting this kind of like restriction in place that doesn't even allow it on that site, then are we really trying to seek highest and best use for that site? So the answer would be no. And that's what this process is pretty much all about in anticipation of, is that a possibility for the township? In December, we approved the sports facilities companies advisory kind of, it's a feasibility study. That'll be coming forward. That'll be at a future meeting.
So it's a sports facility?
Well, yeah, that's what it would be defined as for a recreation.
I think of a...
Yeah.
My grandkids...
The high school, the high school football stadium is 2,600 seats, like the arbitrary number of a thousand.
Not a stadium.
Well, that's what it is.
I'm sorry.
So I don't want to go tit-for-tat in terms of like what is or is not. It's just one where, if you're seeking that type of functional use, the scope of those facilities dictates this type of definition, if that makes sense.
My, my grandkids play a lot of sports. I've been to a lot of these facilities, and they range from indoor facility that has soccer fields, lacrosse fields, basketball courts. There are a lot of facilities that have just a whole array of outdoor fields where they, where teams come in and they run tournaments.
Yeah.
I guess one, is that the kind of thing you're looking at? You're not looking at...
The real estate wouldn't allow for that. We're talking about a significant portion of property that would be sponged up by potential residential, and this would be kind of the remaining real estate for commercial. So you're really talking about out of the 180 acres, maybe like 20-ish acres. So in terms of an expansionary kind of like soccer function, and you can see them all over the place in Spooky Nook and some of these other places. That would be for sight. So you'd be probably looking for more like an indoor-type facility.
It gets me back to my point, is who's going to use it?
We don't know. That's the thing. It's allowing for the theory to allow that to be pursued. And that's where you're getting kind of cart in front of the horse. This is to allow for that type of interest to market the site, to have it as a viable use on the property.
So you don't know what's going in there? You don't know what it is? You don't, you have no, you have no idea if anybody's interested?
Yeah. Use, it's not any particular person's use. It's allowing that use on that, in that district. That's all.
If you're going to go functionally try to seek new development, and you go to engage somebody, and they say, great, what can you do there? And I'm like, well, I know what you can't do, more so than what you can do. This allows us to fully market the site, to bring developers to the table, to J.P. Morgan. That's the function of performing economic development, is you channel in potential developers based off of the ability to kind of say, this site can support highest and best use. To get them to even to be interested in securing the site from J.P. Morgan, doing all the public infrastructure improvements demanding of the site, that's, that's just the action of doing that.
Maybe, but I cannot imagine who would use it. That's my main point. You're not going to attract a minor-league team in here that's going to use it regularly. It's going to be something, there's arena that people will rent out. Is that, is that what you're thinking about?
The market dictates that. That's the thing that we don't decide.
Comes a rental property where people can come in and rent it out.
Again, we're just, we're just, this is just a permission, permitting a use, sir. It's not anything specific. It's just an option, it's just a purpose.
I guess I'm primarily against it because it sounds very, very, I'll say transitional. That's not the right term.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
You cutting me off?
No, I'm sorry. I thought you said, I'm against it, and I thought you were finished. Sorry.
I, I'm saying, what concerns me is it is going to turn into a, I'm saying transitional, but that's not the right term. It's something that's going to rent out, and people are going to come in, do what they want to do, and leave. So it's not going to add, it's not going to provide, one of the things you're looking for is some foundation where someone's going to come in with employees and want their, and want their employees to have a good place to live, which builds up the residential population. That's one of the things you're after. And I'm, my issue is, I don't see how that does it.
Understand.
Doesn't do it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Any other comments?
If folks can hear me, if I'm tall enough, there, that sounds better. Mary Dupont, I'm also in Somerset Lake. And I wanted to just start by saying, you're right. Highest value is unrestricted use. So at one end of the spectrum, if you apply absolutely no rules and absolutely no conditions, the price goes up. But you have another requirement of best, and I want you to consider best relative to the residents of this community. Not best as in lowering taxes. There are many other components to best besides taxes. And somewhere in this, eventually, someone's going to ask you, is my tax bill going to go down $37 or $3,700? Because when the property value goes down, my tax bill will go down, too, and you'll make less revenue. So that maybe 25% loss on the value of my home means, hopefully, I won't have to pay as much in taxes. So I wanted to talk about the other end of the scale here, which is the perfect, right? Because the worst thing that could happen is no restrictions, because then lord knows what'll happen. And once it happens, it's done. There is no turning these things back. I grew up in Montgomery County, Maryland. It is wall-to-wall people, cars, trucks, and pavement. It is not what it was when I grew up there. So best-case scenario, we would have a facility, a use of the property that had little noise, right? That would be a good goal to have, minimal amount of noise. So there's not disruption to those around the property. We would have minimal light pollution. And even the noise, if there is a lot of noise, I'm going to question, who's monitoring that? Who's going to make sure it's under control? Do we have ordinances on noise volumes that will take care of the issue? Light, light pollution is something that needs to be considered. We've got a lot of green areas around here, and dropping a bunch of things lit up at night is not good for anybody. We've got the traffic issue. So in a perfect world, because I want you all to think about not letting anything go, but what should be the goal? What's the target? The target would be, let's say, for every $1 million in revenue, there's one car coming into the place. Wouldn't that, you know, that would be great, right? What we seem to be leaning towards is lots of traffic, and it's surge traffic, meaning it's all happening at very specific periods of time. Even if you said, well, I'm going to have 50 cars for every $1 million in revenue. In a perfect world, those 50 cars would be spread out. Be a couple here, a couple there. They'd be coming and going like a normal business would. Instead, what we seem to be aiming towards is surge traffic problems, where all of it's going to happen around certain hours, which is the opposite of what should be the goal. So I will be making a list of these sort of goals you all need to keep in mind, beginning with the attorney from Somerset Lake, who had some good ideas to see what restrictions should be put in place to take care of your requirement that this thing be not only highest, but best.
Hello. My name's Richard Zimny. I live over in the state of Harrigate. I know a few of you up there. It's good to see you again. I get very concerned when you start taking away the ability to control some of development. I've sat on a zoning hearing. Ms. Sebastian knows that. We've had some very long hearings together, taking very careful deliberations about what should go on. To give up the rights to control some of the development really seems to be in favor of somebody new coming in, and our existing residents are being short-changed. Economic development does not only, does not always promise a long-term sustainable solution for townships. Some of the dichotomies you see, or that I've seen, when you go to the extremes of the edge of Long Island, where they issue three building permits a year, but you still have sustainable farms, you still have high prices for houses, you still have a not overdeveloped area. You go to what has been a disaster from my perspective, what I've seen down at the Delaware beaches, and the overdevelopment because of the total lack of regulation. and the overdevelopment because of the total lack of regulation. And so to give up that right for the zoning hearing board and for you guys to hear about it, I, I don't think it's the right thing to do. I'm not anti-development. But I don't want to see you get, I don't want to see this board and this township give up the right to control development. What's wrong with having a developer look at it and say, hey, can we change this and modify it? How can you help us? How can we work together for intelligent development? What kind of property should we be looking for there? What does this area need? I can tell you one thing we need. We don't have much in the way of a medical facility. We don't have an emergency room that's not thirty minutes away on a bad day. What are we talking about? What are we trying to do for the residents and ourselves? I know some of you up there, I, I've worked with some of you before. I'm just asking you to really give thoughtful consideration to not opening up Pandora's Box. Because I don't know the, the cost benefit won't be there. We'll have to hire more police. Who's going to pay for the roads? You've got roads there that aren't adequate now. And you're going to, you want to talk about building something else? Are we getting state money to do this? Or are we doing it as a township? Those things had to be considered first before you open up Pandora's Box with no controls. That's my thought. I know some of you, you've worked with me, Steve, Winnie, you've worked, you, you know what I'm about. And I'm here tonight and you know what time of year it is for me. So please, just give some consideration to that. I'm just asking you to really think through this because you are opening up Pandora's Box. Thank you.
I'm Deb Shoup. I'm over here in Landerburg Hunt. I have a question first, then I have a statement. When you're talking about this amphitheater, are we talking St. Anthony's? Or are we talking the stretch on forty-one?
The stretch on forty-one, yeah, not St. Anthony's.
So not St. Anthony's?
Not St. Anthony's, no.
So you're talking where they've had the signs for White Clay Point for the last thirty years?
Yes.
We were going to have something like Exton. Okay. Um, so that being aside, I guess one of the things that I would just like to ask or say, and it's going to circuit, things go full circle. So I live in Landerburg Hunt. We've got the mushroom farms and everything right behind us. If we're talking about as a community and a township that we want to attract businesses, we want to attract families, we want to attract people, we need to fix that. Because that's not going to, you're not going to get businesses to come in and want to spend money, whether we go amphitheater, hotel, or just a little bookstore. It doesn't matter. Once they see what's back there, and again, it's, you know, we grow it for the country and that's all wonderful, but, and I don't understand all the scrubbing and all those things that are out there, but I know it's being done in other townships and it's working. For some reason, we don't want to do it here. But I look and say, if we want to attract people, and I love this, this is my home. You know, I've been here over thirty years, but we've got to fix it or you're not going to be able to go with these type of things. It's just not going to work. So.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Mike Weigel. I'm in Somerset Lake. Um, I wanted to understand what type of safeguards you get to put in place um, in regard, in retrospect to the situation this board put us in with Aqua. With the Aqua situation that they did a good job maximizing a payout for the township. They got an upfront payment, but there were no restrictions on the backend on how much Aqua could charge us, the residents. And our rates have gone, have tripled, gone three or fourfold with no restrictions whatsoever. So on one hand, you got some money upfront, but we're paying a lot more every month. Our, our property values are going down because Aqua can do whatever they want. They can charge whatever we want. We don't have any other money. So I want to know what the boat, the, what you guys learned from that experience and what we can do to minimize any downside risk in the future.
Well, I think, I appreciate your area of concern, sir, but what we're talking about is amending the zoning ordinance. So I guess if you could relate that to what you just said.
Yeah, well, what happened in the, I mean, I don't, in the Aqua case, and I don't want to go into all the details, but basically what happened was, my understanding is the township got a lump sum of money upfront.
Well, I, there's, if what you're suggesting is the township is going to get money out of this upfront?
No, 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 no. But, but, but the problem was, was we, they got revenue and that was the goal to get revenue. The downside there was Aqua had free rein to do whatever they want on rates.
So how does that?
Back to Mary's point, it was, it was the best revenue. It was maximizing revenue with no restrictions. But what, to the point of what restrictions can we put on so they can't do whatever they want to hurt the residents? So there's got to be some restrictions, not like what Aqua had, do whatever they want.
So Chris, could you go through the Chester County letter and just kind of talk about the protections that we already have in our existing, uh, through our existing processes that would address some of those concerns?
So I think that the concern is, is the design standards, the, um, total impervious coverage, traffic impact study, environmental study. Um, and then there's the question in my mind about the maximum size and.
You're talking about the actual like wavefront type conditions of site?
Yeah.
I mean, to my understanding, this is about the use. As it comes through the actual land development function, you're proving the use, but it's still subject to restrictions through the land development process. So this isn't just build whatever you can build.
Right.
Um, so as it pertains to sewer, I'm just not sure how to kind of connect the two.
So as it pertains to sewer, just really fast, I don't think any of us would be selling a sewer system. You wouldn't get, be getting that from us. But, but as it pertains to the zoning, there is, there's a process. And in that process, there's checks and balances along the way. And so, um, a lot of the concerns in this letter that we were just discussing, um, goes line by line and talks about like light, noise. We have a noise ordinance. We have these things to protect the residents. So could we kind of go through one by one? There's just a few. Um, and I think that would address a lot of the concerns of many of the people speaking.
How are you paid? I mean, like, you know, like we said, the roads, we have to, we, we have to fill out the lake. You know, with Harrogate, we're still, there's all kinds of stuff that's going to Somerset Lake. So there's these, there's, we end up paying more for development.
I get it.
Some, some people benefit, but other people are, are paying for it.
Sir, if I could, one of the, this is, the zoning ordinance says what you can do with your property and has certain other restrictions. The land development and subdivision ordinance has a lot of very detailed controls that anyone wanting to develop any commercial property or industrial property has to comply with. So some of what they mentioned in the, that, as Christie said, in the letter, are various areas of concern that are controlled by another ordinance. Zoning ordinance really is just, you can do this at this location and you have to have setbacks that are this far from the road and other controls. So this is a basic issue, allowing this particular use there. In the R-one zone, you can have a single-family house. That's the use. What you do with it and how you do the lot and how you divide it, excuse me, is in the subdivision and land development ordinance. So there are a lot of other controls. Stormwater comes into control. We have, we're working on a two-oh-nine program that will require developers to pay money into a traffic impact fund. So there are a lot of other pieces to anyone building anything there. This is just use.
Okay, well, I just, this board approved from, not you.
I know, I know.
Lots, lots of years, we've gone to the state of Pennsylvania. We've talked to people and they go, we can't do anything about it.
I know.
Did it, and you got to live with it. Take crap. So we, as, as residents are suffering from the.
I get it.
This board did years ago. I just want to make sure we, that doesn't happen again.
Understand. Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hi, this is Anne Palmer. Um, I'm, I had a question because of something that Winnie said. Uh, so what you were saying was that there's still safeguards through the zoning process. Are the zoning officials, are the people on the zoning board elected? Or are they volunteers, appointed? How, how did they get to be on that board?
Well, the zoning hearing board is for, it, that, its purpose is when people don't want to comply with the zoning ordinance and ask for relief from it. So that's a separate, they're appointed by the Board of Supervisors. They're not elected officials. But that's a zoning hearing function and that's for people who say, the setback required here is fifty feet. I only have, I want to set my house back forty feet. They request a variance or sometimes a special exception, which is relief from the zoning ordinance. So the actual enforcement is through the township. Uh, the elected officials, obviously, and also their employees who are zoning officers. And engineers.
So any use of that space, would that come then again before the Board of Supervisors?
Correct.
Part of the land development.
Zoning and all of the plans?
Yes. Yes.
It would be the planning commission and then the Board of Supervisors in a preliminary and final land development two-phase process uh, with subsequent ability to put in more elements of a land development overview as well, based off of the complexity of the property. So in essence, any land developer comes through would be reviewed four times publicly. It should be possible zoning hearing functions as well.
So why the need to put it in the, with, not put it in the exceptions section?
Is your question, why, why is it a permitted use and not a not permitted use? So as the ordinance stands right now, you're correct. If someone wanted to build a, an arena in the UD zone or the CI zone, uh, they would have to go to the zoning hearing board. They could do one of two things. They could say, you know what? You don't identify stadium use. You don't allow it anywhere. I can put it wherever I want because that's the laws to zoning. If you don't provide for a use at all, it can go anywhere. Or they could say, all right, I want to put it in, I want to put a stadium here. Your ordinance doesn't provide for it. Let me have a variance from your ordinance and put it here. Um, so they could do that. I think the good planning would say you should allow it and control it as opposed to not allow it.
So I'm still not understanding the, like, why is it not under, um, two-hundred dash fifty-eight use regulations be conditional uses? You're talking about not putting it there, but putting it in the uses by right.
It is that, this, this draft or this ordinance, yes, provides it as a use by right.
Okay. But the, okay, so what you, but what you're saying is that they have the right to use that, but then they go through the zoning process.
They have to go, it's a use permission, but then they have to comply with all the other regulations in the zoning ordinance, all the regulations in the stormwater management ordinance, all the regulations in the land development subdivision ordinance.
And do, do our zoning ordinances, uh, will they protect us from a big project like an arena? I mean, I don't know if that does. So that's why I would want it to be in the conditional uses, not the permitted.
Well, this ordinance was, allows the arena as a use. So if you're saying, will it protect us? Then this proposed amendment would be to allow it. So no, because it's, this would allow it.
Okay, so if you're voting it yes tonight, then you're allowing for the building of an arena going through the zoning process.
I'm sorry.
If you, if you are voting yes to this, to this change, you're voting to allow for an arena to be built if it goes through the zoning process?
Yes, that's the point of the, that's the point of the amendment, to allow it as a use. Yes.
Okay. All right, well, I, I con, I concur with another gentleman who said, much better use for us would be a nice medical center. You don't have big concerts going on.
This doesn't limit, this, this doesn't say the only thing you can build in those zones is, just adds it as a use.
Yeah, I know, but it does allow for it.
It allows it. That, that's what the proposal would be, yes. Among many other uses, yes.
Correct.
Chris, could you just highlight the pros and cons between a conditional use and use by right?
I, I, I think that's probably a hangup tonight is just understanding kind of what by right. And as Winnie explained, there still are limitations through the process. I think the biggest thing is just, and I, I agree, I would love a medical facility as well. It doesn't mean you're going to get one. Um, and join the line in terms of competition for those types of quote-unquote beacon-type functions. I mean, we're in an area where they got rid of a hospital, they're not adding it. Uh, and whether or not you're viable for it, that's another discussion in of itself. Um, the UD district would allow for a medical facility. It's not saying we're not going to seek out those services. It just allows us to seek all potential opportunities. And this is one where if you look across the board in the nation, this is a function of a catalyst for mixed-use development, live-work-play-townsetter-type functions across the board. So it allows that, that to happen, but it doesn't say that you can't also have that. In fact, they could both be potentially on the same site. It just depends. So this is not seen as some semblance of a, uh, like a, like a free-for-all, I guess, is the way.
Right. I just think that that's an important point for anyone listening because the, that whole process, the land use development process, it is complicated, I think.
Very. And, and I could, and what a conditional use is under the law is a use that is a permitted use. So it's not not permitted. It's a permitted use, but it requires a hearing, a record hearing before the Township Board of Supervisors, court reporter present, there's testimony and evidence. And then it allows the Board of Supervisors to place conditions on an approval. But it's very, conditional uses are permitted. It's just sort of a closer look and you can put more conditions. Uh, you can put conditions on it and it requires that hearing. It is costly and it is, and you know, permitted uses are less costly. Um, I understand what you're saying.
And I think less costly for both sides, right? Not just the, for the developer, for us as well. Because we have to pay for the solicitors.
Right, I, I make money, but nobody else does, I guess, yeah.
Let's see.
Hi, Sue Rollhite. Uh, question first, then a comment. Have any of the studies been done? Traffic? Agriculture, environment, anything like that?
Yeah. They don't happen until there's an application.
And the application comes from?
Whoever wants to build something.
So if you're given unconditional use to something?
No, don't, unconditional is not a, a word that we use in zoning. Conditional use is, if you look at the zoning ordinance, there are certain items that are listed as conditional uses in many of the zones. And that says it's permitted, but the board wants to hold a hearing about it. A permitted use, there's no hearing, but they still have to jump through all the hoops in the ordinance and all the other ordinances. Those studies come, they're particular for a use. So if somebody came in and said, I want to build a stadium, then that traffic study, all of those studies would be based on that particular use, the number of people they think, what kind of traffic it's going to generate. So those studies don't come until there is a person who has actually applied.
Well, that may be a good thing because, um, the studies for the hydrogen sulfide have gone nowhere. So if you have to study the traffic, this isn't going to happen in my lifetime. Can, hey, I know I'm going to make you guys so mad. The hydrogen sulfide, just really fast. That is, they're, they're regulated by the Department of Agriculture. And so we really are doing the very best that we can up here to, to kind of toe the line with legally what we can do before we get sued by one of the farms. Um, I know it's frustrating. It's frustrating for me to hear about it all the time. It's frustrating for you to have to smell it all the time. It's, it's not a great situation. But we want to do everything we can to rectify this. So just kind of put that to bed. That's related to the Department of Agriculture. So just so we're clear on that, that is very different than a traffic impact study. And if you want a hospital, if you want all of the, a grocery store, if you want anything like that here, it's really going to depend on the density of what is being, being built there. A lot of developers will not even come here if there's not the, the density. So it's really, you have to build it and then, and then they come. Um, so I don't know if that makes any sense at all, but.
I mean, I.
That's why we're, we're not attracting medical facilities here now.
First of all, I moved here almost thirty years ago for this. Darkness at night, skies. I did not put my children in, in a consolidated school district. I sent them to Ursula and Academy. But I lived in this township because of the school district. So if my daughter couldn't continue there, I knew where I was putting her. I was not putting her in Delaware schools. And that's why my husband is a JP Morgan employee, moved to this township. So I don't think you have to worry about attracting people because they really don't want to live in Delaware and put up with the school system. My question tonight is, what's the density on the housing? What's the zoning on the housing? My house was one-acre zoning. Do we have zoning in this township as to how much land you can build on? And are we building townhouses? We building, what are we building?
Every, um, there, there are different districts within the.
So I'm sorry.
There, and I have talking problems, sorry. Um, there are different districts within the township. So in the R-one zone, there's a, a maximum or a minimum lot size, for example, in single-family homes. This is proposed, I believe, to be. This is proposed, I believe, to be mixed.
It is. In the Unified District, I believe the construct is three units per acre with 30% for permissible open space on the contiguous site. So you're talking about, if you want to call it that, three units per acre is not very tight. And it's, okay, and that's one where, okay, I
That's what Somerset Lake is. Somerset Lake is three units per acre.
Correct.
You're going to get revenue from these houses. Now you're going to get more kids in the school.
Yes.
And then we're going to build more schools.
Uh, school population is actually going down.
The schools want development.
The school population is going down because they're replacing an aging school, but not because it's of demand for increased student then I encourage you to attend a school board meeting to announce your discontent with the school. I'm sorry, I cannot hear you. Well, that's the thing, you're within the margin for allowable for school-aged children to come in to live in new housing. So like I said, if it's open capacity for a brand-new school system, which is going to be larger than the existing one, and you're not increasing school-aged children population count beyond that capacity, you would be allowed to do that. Like, that would be like within the kind of capacity of the school system. Yeah. I would say if you're not bringing in a significant amount of school-aged children, but you're increasing the property base, you would actually support schools by giving them more revenue. I, I can't answer all school board expansion questions too, as I'm just making sure, I'm just, conceptually, that's what makes sense in my head. I'm sorry, what was that?
My question was, the question, however, whatever you want to call it, with the volume of children that would be bringing into the school.
Smaller units in more dense constructs actually produce less school-aged children. That's a metric fact. Oh, that's actually a great point that came out. So all of this is part of overall rezoning or zoning effort that we're doing as a township. So we encourage and support as many people to come out and just get a glimpse, or not a glimpse, to participate in the process. This is public outreach meeting number three. It'll be Wednesday, starting here from 5:30 to 7:00 with the Township Zoning Consultant. We will be going through the actual draft map zoning at this meeting, as well as the vision aesthetic of what the zoning will achieve, inclusive of this site as well, which will be framed from Unified District to just nomenclature terminology change, Mixed Use District, but essentially the same outcome. As well as other outcomes, and all of this is to say that schools is actually participating in that project and they're on our zoning task force. And the CFO of the schools, Mark Tracy, is on that task force.
Hi, everybody. I have a question, and it's probably, like, I'm confused, and I'd like to be unconfused. My, is my understanding correct when I say that we're all here today because there's this 188 acres of land that's owned by JP Morgan Chase? And they have approached you, the New Garden Township, to say, we need perhaps to build other than what we're allowed to build on this land?
That is not true.
First half was correct.
Yeah.
So, so can you just very
Yeah, so, and I'm not familiar, I'm not familiar with everyone else's familiarity with the function of economic development, but essentially, the township has historically, based off of just a lack of information left behind from prior managers and staff and board members, really taken a proactive approach to facilitating economic development functions on behalf of their municipality. And it's not just New Garden. Cannon Square doesn't do this. Cannon Township, no, no real Pennsylvania community, I understand, really performs it. So this is one where we can look at our township in terms of assets of, we'll call them properties, that have been zoned for some level of active use. Like, for the most part, the entire north-central side of the township has been zoned as a business park for medical centers and has never achieved anything, even though it's right off of Route 1, and it's wired for sewer right through Newark Road. So with that, this is one where, as we recognize what does and does not permit active investment into the township from a potential developer, what are the types of things being built in the market right now that are attracting developers to go into different municipalities and trying to go through the land development process to get a development built? And to my understanding, even talking with just developers through my time as a, you know, public manager, a lot of the easy sites have kind of been built. This is a very hard site. And so it's one where we're looking at it, thinking, what is the ability to incentivize uh, investment, someone to see it as a potential place that they can purchase it from JP Morgan? And we would, we would essentially facilitate that connection. Hey, we have a site here. It's owned, it's zoned for active use. It has a lot of pros and other considerations about what we can and cannot do with the property. Is this of interest to you? Because JP Morgan doesn't do this on their own accord. They don't have an economic development manager. They're not actively marketing the site. They're not really, because they're not incentivized to do anything because they have a trillion-dollar-backed portfolio of assets. They don't care about a $10 million property in southeast Pennsylvania. We are aligning the potential uses to a site to execute a vision as part of the UD zoning vision for this type of function on that site. And performing that kind of connectivity between when it's allowed to be formed there, doing outreach, showing, hey, have you looked at this type of concept? Have you looked at this type of concept? This could all be incredibly unsuccessful and lead to a bunch of conversations that never lift off the ground, but at least we're trying.
That's why we're talking about a stadium or an arena?
As a sports tourism facility. Think of it like a box that does something around that function.
Talk about a specific sports activity center. And whatever comes out of that is something that may attract somebody to want to buy the land and build.
Correct.
Okay, so that's why we're talking about an arena or a stadium. It could, it could be, it could be any kind of sports activity.
Correct. This isn't like a thinly disguised plan to attract the 76ers to New Garden Township, but it's just highest and best use. There you go.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. I appreciate it.
I'm Jeremy Abelson. I moved to Somerset Lake on Broadrun Road in November. And unfortunately, I haven't, the benefit of the 15 or 20 years of the history of this property, except to see it as I go by. I'm a commercial real estate banker. I've been doing that for 30 years. So I've been lucky that I haven't had much experience in special assets. But I had a question about what you folks have discussed with the special assets group at JP Morgan, which has owned this property for how long?
Since 2018.
Okay, that's seven years. I did math. What discussions have you had with JP Morgan? Basically, this property has clearly no commercial value. Otherwise, somebody would have come up to you 20 years ago and said, I'll pay you 3 million, I'll pay you 6 million, I'll pay I can assure you that after seven years, that asset on JP Morgan's books has a value of $0. And there's a fellow somewhere, and I'll doubt that a lot of people know where that guy actually is, or woman, sorry, that, that is in charge of just getting rid of it, just getting rid of it. So what have you done so far to ask JP Morgan to just deed the property over to the township? Then you would have ultimate control over the future of this property.
Yeah, I mean,
So I also wanted to ask
And just to make sure, and I agree wholeheartedly with you. What's that?
Sorry, go ahead.
I said, I don't know, I didn't say that, but I agree wholeheartedly with you in terms of what the value of the property is. It's on the residential side, like, that's where the value is for the site.
Retiring soon, happy to help.
What's that?
Retiring soon, happy to help.
We're looking for support if you want to be a future economic development coordinator. There you go.
Then the second question. Well, I had a comment. Live-work-play, to me, doesn't mean a concert venue with lights and sounds and thousands of people showing up at night half-mile from my house. So I don't agree with that. And I kind of brought up a somewhat facetious question. What studies have you engaged, which, which have, you have been able to conclude that this is such a good idea, that you would want to go ahead and define the use of a property that nobody wants that use? So, and finally, I like the idea of a youth sports venue.
And not to cut you off, that's currently what we're going through as a review right now. So the name of the company, Sports Facilities Companies, was approved at our December meeting. We're in the process of executing that advisory consulting agreement, which will develop a pro forma for a mixed-use flexible use sports-type facility that is market feasible for southeastern Pennsylvania in this exact site, based off of a demographic analysis. So we're getting that type of functional, kind of, understanding of what is considered to be even viable to answer other questions about who would want to build what, where, and why. That helps understand that. And that speaks the language of developers. And you go, hey, this is a model that actually, if you were to build, because the other part is, is the capex right now is astronomical to get these types of facilities built, you have to be able to say that you are, as a township, not obstructing that with other elements of, you know, like, the nimbyist type of mindset of, we're going to restrict it, but this way, this way, and this way, if that makes sense.
Go to that Milford project on Route 1 below Dover.
Correct.
And ask M&amp;T Bank how many times they've had to restructure that debt associated with that project.
Yep.
And that doesn't have stands.
Yeah.
That does have
I would also not describe that as a viable use for this site as well. You're talking about like a 100-acre sprawling athletic field complex, and you don't even have the space on site there to do that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
JP Morgan Chase owns the property. Do they pay taxes on it?
Yes.
Property tax? Okay. So, so even though they may, as a gentleman, they have suggested, want to give it away because
I can tell you wholeheartedly, they do not want to give it away.
A good deal. Would we think about buying it? And then if we bought it, what would we do with it?
I would strongly consider the township's experience with buying property has been, yeah. Yeah.
But we have
Well, just in, in Pennsylvania, it's one where the, the acquisition of the property would have to go through the facilitation of, I think, a public auction, where someone could actually buy it for a lot lower price, as well as you issue, submit a solicitation for an RFP proposal for development services, both of which would come back and you're, you're not guaranteed a strong outcome. This is to allow the private market to decide the best use and working with the township to secure a good outcome is the best-case scenario for the township. So you talk about protections for residents. This is what we're responsibly doing to protect residents through this process.
The first that could happen is JP Morgan Chase gets stuck with the property, continue to pay taxes, and we go on with that. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. It's
Great. At this point, we're going to adjourn the hearing and then we're going to reopen the regular Board of Supervisors meeting. Do you have one, you want to speak?
41, as you know, is the only major road that I'm aware of that connects the Gap to Wilmington, Delaware. And as you know, it's constantly crowded with 18-wheelers and other large trucks. My background in my career was with the New York City Police Department. So I always evaluate things that are being proposed from the standpoint of how it's going to impact police and other emergency services in the event of some kind of disaster. I was recently with my wife coming home from shopping on Newark Road, and something had happened on 41 between Newark Road and Route 7. I don't know what it was, but there were fire trucks, the road was closed down, there were some police services going on, and it was a nightmare. The only way that I got around it was I turned around, drove back into Tough Kennaman, made a left at the light, went to Penn Green, took Penn Green to Laurel Heights Road, and then got home. But everybody else who was not aware that this is what you could do, the traffic was a logistic nightmare. So what I'm saying is, whatever you want to do on the property between Route 7 and Newark Road on 41, keep in mind that if there's any kind of an accident, and there are always accidents on 41 involving a truck or whatever, you are going to have a logistic nightmare for any police services, medical services, fire trucks, whatever. And that's my point.
My name's Janice Stevens. I live in Harrogate. And from what I've gathered, we're all talking about this White Clay Point area and this stadium would likely, if it were ever to happen, would be in that area. And I saw something that referred to zoning of the property at the corner of Southwood and Limestone Roads. And being in Harrogate, that is more immediate interest to me. So I'm wondering, is there some talk about what would go there? And is it going to be in the same zoning category as this stadium arena?
I'm not aware of anything in Southwood. Currently, through some sort of active zoning or rezoning process. In terms of that area in of itself, it's always been some form of like a highway commercial-type corridor function along Route 7, whatever that is viable for, but that's it. So there's no anticipated changes for that.
No, there's no discussion or active plans for that area?
No.
Okay.
Here's Alex Palmer, live in Somerset. So you're saying this belongs to JP Morgan?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
My name is Alex Palmer, live in Somerset. This belongs to JP Morgan?
It does.
They own it.
They own it. Well, they acquired it in a liquidation sale from Priet, who went bankrupt.
They're paying taxes on it.
They are paying taxes on it, yes.
And they want you to present to us and to the township a form of building something on it?
They're not requesting anything. This is us being proactive as a township to facilitate essentially engagement for development on the site that's been proposed for nearly three decades.
And how did this come about, though?
By actively seeking economic development as a mechanism for increasing tax revenues for the township.
You're like a real estate agent. What's the kickback for you guys?
That's not how this works.
There has to be.
It's not really, yeah.
But what's in it for you guys?
In terms of ethics, nothing. I'm the township manager. I can't get anything monetarily incentivized to me. Yeah. Oh, you're talking about public infrastructure?
Well, like, you're doing something for them. They must be doing something for you.
No. But that's not how that works. I'm sorry, I'm just, I don't understand.
Doing anything for them, sir. They're just making, they're just potentially, this ordinance would potentially make, make it an opportunity for somebody, not JP Morgan, they just own it, to develop it. That's all. Nobody's doing anything
Someone's getting money for it.
And this would be inclusive of the entire
It's the entire district, not, exactly. It's not just that
Correct, yeah.
Specific to this process.
What you're talking about, eventually, there's going to be road, maintenance, building, schools, police. It's going to be a lot more for us paying for this. So yes, I could see what that is going to do for us, but we're pinging up the balance of this. So it doesn't make sense. I understand what you're trying to do, help us out. A hospital would be great. That's not going to be feasible because you said there's no really incentive for them. You're saying there's a potential stadium. That's the carrot. But that could be changed. So I'm just saying, why don't you just give the builders, you know, hey, I got a piece of property. What can you do? What can you build? And we can work with that. But you're trying to make it so that we are going to be eating this thing for the next 20, 30 years.
Sir, all this ordinance does is allow a stadium.
I can tell you right now, a lot of people are getting a little bit upset about this whole situation that every time you guys come up and give us this, where's the one paying it? You're going to be gone, and we're stuck with this bill. You're going to be gone, and we're stuck with this bill.
I understand your concern, but all this does is make it permitted there, that's it.
Okay.
It doesn't say to any, it doesn't really do any, it just means it's a possibility that somebody might want to do that, that's all.
Well, yeah, possibility, but there has to be more possibilities, there's more...
There are uses, there are a lot more uses in the zone.
So, yeah.
This is just another one, that's all. It's just an additional use.
Okay. I'm just bringing it up because it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I would, you're familiarizing yourself with Chapter 200 and all this, and looking at all the different permitted uses, like that's, this is just one of them. It's just saying that if we're going to be seeking any sense of ability to sell the site on behalf of J.P. Morgan in terms of branding of it, yeah, that's what we're doing, that's what we're performing, because J.P. Morgan will not do that for you. If the goal is to sit by and wait for them to seek a developer to come by and build out the site, nothing will ever change. Route 41 will stay the same, the site, in terms of, you're talking about improvement for stormwater, the stormwater situation will remain the same, like, nothing will change.
No times change, doesn't have to happen at all, then.
Thanks.
And that's, that's an input, but...
Thanks.
Chris, do you have a list of the current uses that are allowed in the unified development?
I'd have to pull them up and read them down, but you're talking about all kind of commercial active uses that you can imagine.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That concludes, now, I think, that's it. You want, I think you can adjourn now.
Okay. We're going to adjourn the public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendment, and we're going to reopen the regular Board of Supervisors meeting at this time. We have a number of agenda items to go through. Later in the agenda, we will finish our discussion of the zoning ordinance amendment. So the next item on the agenda is presentations, the Act 209 presentation. So you're all welcome to stay for the board meeting if you'd like. If not, feel free to leave now.
I know.
You'd have to have a specific opportunity zone that we would have to set up?
I think that those are incentives that are usually dictated by the state, so that's where Chris has been working with the Office of Economic Development.
So, population is decreasing. It's actually decreasing significantly. I'm like, I think, the only one with a kid in the schools.
We peaked in 2007, I graduated, and a couple of years after that, they peaked.
It's like a third down from 15 years ago. I live here, yeah.
Thirty years.
Where do you live?
Oh, it's from Jersey town.
Okay, I'm from Jersey, Salem County, a long time ago, yeah, yeah. But nice to meet you, I'm Christie.
We're going to continue the meeting at this time. If anybody else would like to leave, please leave now, otherwise you're welcome to stay here for the rest of the meeting. I'm going to turn it over to Chris Heinz. Chris is going to give a presentation on Act 209. Thank you, Chris.
All right. Make sure you can... Can you hear me? Okay. Also, these are, the next two are just presentations. These are my best attempt to serve on behalf of Bowman Engineering to go over kind of where we're at through the Act 209 process, which, if you remember, back in last February, we adopted as a measure to seek, you talk about kind of structuring the ability to kind of glean off momentum around development for properties. A big one is about studying the generation of future trips that are assessed against a different type of development. Trips are assessed against a fee, the fee comes back to transportation revenue that can be supportive of projects identified in the actual capacity requirements for the study in of itself. So all this is to say that Act 209 allows us to understand where we're going to be studying, which is, for us, it's seven contiguous miles within the township, mostly kind of a gerrymandered map along Baltimore Pike, Newark Road, and Route 41. And then two, it structures in the assessment of a fee based off of your market, based off in any kind of parameters, but it's essentially, and trips that are generated from a site. So if you were to build, in theory, let's say, a White Clay Point, and they said this site's going to generate 1,000 trips, okay. So 1,000 trips gets assessed against, let's say, in theory, 2,000, right now we have an interim fee of 1,000, but like $2,000 per trip, 2,000 times the 500, and then it comes, that's revenue generated into a transportation restricted fund, and then we use that money to go towards all of the capital improvement projects that are recommended as the result of the study of the corridor in of itself, if that makes sense. So it's kind of like a, an aggregate collection of information structured into a transportation improvement plan to address other transportation needs in the township. Let's say, in theory, if the Bucktoe Road, New Garden Road, kind of awkward intersection that's part of it, you'd be able to take revenue from a project at White Clay and invest it into improving structure and transportation improvements there, if that makes sense. So all this is to say that we're about halfway through the project. Granted, the elements of the delivery are kind of phased out in different buckets of part of the project. So one of them is, you have to assess your land use assumptions report. This is kind of an understanding of, this is how the township will be built out into the future, both existing state, past, existing, and future, if that makes sense. That goes into also developing a roadway sufficiency analysis. This is the capacity of your existing infrastructure, and then based off of that potential future build-out, this is the actual transportation impact fee to collectively attack some of those projects into the future. So we're right around the area where we're finalizing the LUAR, and then moving into the roadway sufficiency analysis, and then, of course, subsequently, the transportation capital improvement plan behind that to finish the project roughly around midsummer timeframe. Now, part of this is one where staff supported the actual concept to get the project up and off the ground, but we have a dedicated committee called the Transportation Impact Fee Advisory Committees, or TIFAC, I'll say it for short. This is a collection of, we'll call them volunteers, and particular types of volunteers in the township, because Act 209 is very stringent. You have to have certified business officials, people with a planning background, people think, so you really have kind of a real, I'll call it, narrow lens of people to support this project on the TIFAC. They were recognized, they've been supporting the actual process in of itself. So we had our second meeting last week, and this is just a kind of summary of that, and I can answer many questions, or as we move forward in the process, there'll be public outreach meetings about that in the future as well. So that's kind of the quick agenda. This is only a few slides, so I'm going to kind of go through it, because I pretty much went over kind of the broad brush things there. So this is to say, this is kind of where we're at. These are the next kind of two phases, and of course, adoption is the final measure. It's actually limited based off an amount of months each who are permitted to do it, which is 18. So we are kind of committed to approving this thing, or not approving it, but seeking that final motion to approve the consideration at the, I think it's no later than the August meeting. So this is, if people are not familiar with the process, this is kind of encapsulating what I just said, and that's really kind of what we're looking for, is can we harness the energy of development to seek funding towards transportation projects that we can have supportive funding for through development? And that's also one that's also of consideration, that via the Municipal Planning Code of Pennsylvania, a developer over here is not responsible for doing transportation improvements over there, so you can't do off-site improvements. This allows for that, though, because you've allowed it to have that funding go towards a project within your study area. So this is just where we're at in terms of a timeline. We meet now kind of on the second Wednesdays of month, on a kind of monthly rhythm here until the end of the project, towards the mid-part of the summer. What we're looking at, and we'll provide some kind of maps as well, but this is just the underlying document that they do to kind of build out their land use assumption report. They use our own documents. This is what our comp plan says, this is what our zoning says, this is what we're trying to have our zoning says, this is trend build-out trends in the township. I would say if you were to do this Act 209 process back in like 1995 to 2000, you'd have a very aggressive land use assumption report, because that was the time when the township was being built out. If you did this exact same study in 2010, it would be a very negative trend analysis because we essentially put the kind of brakes on all development in the township right around that timeframe. So it can be kind of circuitous in terms of when you do this study and what it means for what they assume about your actual land use, if you will. So this is what they're looking at in terms of the potential, we'll call them like the contiguous potential future build-out of the township, if you were to say all vacant spaces and redevelopment opportunities. So it's also one where you can think that overall, of a township of 16 square miles, 10,000 acres, there's not a lot of available existing sites kind of left. So your built-out state is one where you have to really figure out what works well there, what you want there, through the actual zoning process, and then what can be achieved there in terms of it's just the density constructs in that physical area, and what that means from a potential unit standpoint and a potential square footage standpoint from potential commercial facilities. And this is all to say that this is great, grand, and wonderful, but behind all this, and normally, the municipality's in charge of it, but of course, in this case, we're not, is infrastructure capacity behind it, in this case, sewer. And I'll say right now that if you were not to improve any of the wastewater treatment facilities in the township in their existing state, you won't be able to achieve much of any of these numbers. So that's part of it as well. So these are just some existing maps, I'll provide some context. This is our kind of study area, if you will. So it's all the areas kind of to the north and the south, and the kind of maximizing the actual area around the corridors as much as possible, to find as many potential intersections within the study area as possible, to then nominate transportation improvements for those areas in of themselves. So it's a study of intersections within the roadway area. Now, all this is to say that they don't address safety measures, it addresses capacity measures. Sometimes they can be mutually beneficial in the same type of project, but it's just because an area might be safe, or excuse me, unsafe, but fitting of the capacity, this process wouldn't nominate projects for that, if that makes sense. They're kind of separate from each other. So these are kind of seen as some of our arterial roads that we have, this should be of no surprise to anybody. Of course, Route 41 is the primary one, and it's the top half of the township, excuse me, the top part of the township in US 1, but in terms of just major feeders in and around the township, and of course, we're focusing on the primary ones in that kind of part of the township, if you will. That also connects us, you know, kind of Baltimore Pike along the boroughs, and of course, the thoroughfare from 41 that goes down into Wilmington and all the way up towards, you know, potentially all the way up towards the Turnpike, if you kind of go all the way up to Harrisonburg that way in 30 and ever. So these are kind of the identified parcels that are part of that potential build-out map, so through the land use studies, and the issue is, is some of these are even eased properties for conservation easements, they're just vacant properties. So even the ones that are kind of quote-unquote on the board here, there isn't to say that there would be a potential usage of that site for development. But technically, it meets the criteria, and that's what this process is about, it's about identifying eligible properties throughout the township. And it's also one where this doesn't mean that everything's going to be built out in these areas, this is just identification of it. You know, all these people could basically have no public, or excuse me, no development or selling interest at all whatsoever. Then, of course, you're very limited down in here, because we're not looking at all in kind of the lower Landenburg area for, number one, anchoring future growth, and two, for really kind of interrupting it for zoning, as well as studying it for the Act 209 process, because we're not seen as major feeders. So that's really it. I mean, well, these maps kind of just, you know, if you have this as the ultimate build-out, this is that kind of 10-year build-out. So these are maybe more of those like heightened properties, if you will, that might be more subject to redevelopment. We have kind of a focus, if you will, for the Tough Kennaman area, that's been part of a corridor envisioning process through the township, through the comp plan. We had a streetscape review done about 2020, 2021 timeframe, and it's subject to, if you come out on Wednesday night, also a kind of focused attention for rezoning within the Tough Kennaman District. It's not shy on understanding that the township has investment to see if Tough Kennaman can kind of achieve that kind of, you know, filling up the gaps of some of those vacant parcels in the area. Then, of course, this is that kind of north-central side that I alluded to in the prior discussion. You know, all of this has been zoned for active use, and of course, our commercial corridor. So when you really start kind of whittling out a lot of the noise, you come down to, it's really kind of looking at a few very select properties within the township for possible development and redevelopment. The gray areas are places where we already have a land development, active project in of itself. This is on the southern side. So that's really it. Our next steps is finalize the LUAR, I'll kind of speak in the acronyms here, the roadway sufficiency analysis just after that, and then we're going to do our upcoming meeting, and then most of the upcoming TIFAC meetings are going to be in preparation for the public meetings coming up in the late spring timeframe. So I have any questions, and I can funnel ones that I can't answer back to Bowman about the process, but for the board and the public. Very exciting stuff. Any questions?
I know, but they can't hear you online, it's not being, it's being recorded, so you have to speak.
Don't you think that's something you should check into? When we looked at this years ago, we looked at it years ago, it wasn't where the North Mile, because it was only a few people in the state of Pennsylvania could even gotten involved with this thing, or to chase developers away. Doesn't bring them in to chase them away. That's your opinion?
Well, my view of it is, the good thing is that you can, with the 209, as it stands now, all we can do is make a developer fix the road right along their property line. That's it. With 209, you can get them to, you can use that money for more general road improvements. So to me, it's an advantage.
About the township, all your way. Well, I wouldn't say all your way. The board is the one who makes the negotiation with developers. You can't, you can't, they got a line on their property line. They can, they have to take care of that piece of property. You ask them for money, you're chasing them away. Negotiate, there was roads in this township that Bob Taylor negotiated, Steve, I'm sure Steve can agree with him, because he's aware of these things, that he negotiated with, and not only them and other townships too, to do things that they ordinarily wouldn't do because they want to put another house in, or something like that. You've got to be able to deal with these things. You just can't, you just can't say to somebody, look, you want to build there, it's going to cost you X number of dollars to do these roads, you're just going to chase them away. Like you said, there's not many places in this township you can do that, and you don't want to chase anybody away, because, you know, the expenses that the township is incurring now, it's got to come from someplace. And I don't think you want to chase that back. I think you ought to look into it, see how many people got it, not that many people.
So next, we've got the Baltimore Pike Side Path feasibility study. Chris is going to make a presentation on that, too.
I think I've had too many. It's because I didn't have to present much at the last meeting that I'm having to present everything for this one. So this is just kind of a summary of a potential review conducted by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, DVRPC in short. So what they're doing is, they're finally kind of drawing their attention from the gigantic kind of area that they cover, which is obviously the entire metropolitan MSA of Philadelphia, and looking at southeastern Pennsylvania contiguously for the kind of area between the, probably like the eastern section of Kennet Square Borough to the Avondale Line as a potential of a, what they're normally advocating for, which is connectivity through multimodal initiatives. If you don't know much about DVRPC, they have a very broad brush that they paint with, but it's one where they're kind of learning more about our area, they're connecting with a lot of our mediating structures, so our nonprofit community, the townships, the boroughs, other kind of stakeholders that look at transportation initiatives, T-MAC, the county, and this is kind of what the genesis of their initial kickoff for the project was, looking at kind of what we all might roll our eyes about, which is the potential of a feasibility to... to put a pedestrian kind of multimodal path from Avondale Borough essentially over to Kennet Square Borough. So we're just, we're more participating in the process and providing commentary, feedback and input, but this isn't a township project, it's not requesting township funds at any point that I understand at any time immediately. And of course, we're mostly just kind of waiting to see what they think is feasible for this area. And then we'll see where it goes from there. So like I said, this is very exploratory in nature. And if you want to think of it as a ability to kind of provide some public comments and provide that back to the actual D V R P C, that would be the goal of tonight, if that makes sense. So with that, essentially, they're doing what I just talked about, they're looking at a five mile stretch of a possibility of a side path. And of course, this looks very much like Baltimore Pike that we're all accustomed to and used to. No, so it's going to be a very difficult function for them to be able to solve for the ability to find what they're looking for, which is a off the beaten path stretch of, I'll call it like fifteen foot offset, if you will, to allow for a ten foot path along the side. So my hat's off to them, they're going to have their, you know, work cut out for them, but essentially, they are looking at it. So this is the overall study area and of course, New Garden, the reason we're playing a significant role in this is because we have the largest amount of real estate in their pathway. These are all the different documents and you can see it's not just New Garden specific, it's the entire region, so they're looking at everything, inclusive of county inputs as well, and T Mac documents as well. So with that, this isn't to say that they don't think that there's a sense of resistance. In fact, their understanding based off of total community input is that people have been looking for this, it's just nobody knows where it can go and what the ability to achieve it is. Those really nice, strong kind of objectives that we're going to with seeking outcomes like this. So as you could say, yeah, if you're looking for, you know, this type of pathway, you know, this is what you're working with if you're doing it right on Baltimore Pike. You know, you have heavy embankments on one side and essentially immediate uses of intensity right along the southerly side. So this is kind of what their gold objective is and what they're going to be looking for, where it is, I have yet to understand, other than potentially there's a kind of easement along the railroad line that would be potential there, but you're talking about working with the railroad and best of luck, they're probably the toughest and most difficult organizations ever to deal with regardless of the scale of that railroad entity, coming from municipality that had a railroad go right through the middle of the city. And where they're looking for their design goals, you're talking about what would be kind of seen as a complete streets, kind of a cross section type initiative, is there a way to kind of share pathways as well as kind of offset the pathways? So they're looking at all of this. These are all just kind of conceptualizations of what they're looking for, but they're going to basically deliver this type of analysis of the report and its eventuality. And it might be something that is completely feasible or non-feasible, it just depends. Like I said, it just started, so we don't know where this exactly is going to be going. So with that, this is kind of their approach, what they've done to date, which is basically just kind of meeting with the municipalities. They've done some onsite kind of touring, if you will, of the corridor, they've come out here before, so they've ventured and journeyed all the way out from their central offices in the Philadelphia area out here to, it's a little old New Garden, to put eyes on the scene. So really, this is how they see as their stakeholders of people actually supporting the project, like providing the commentary and feedback. Not yet fully disclosed of how much they're going to be doing for like public engagements in the future, but we've requested that as they kind of narrow in on a possibility that they want to see kind of public support, that they schedule some, maybe some like remote webinars or seminars, if you will, to get that. So to be determined, it's based off of D V R P C's appetite to do that. As I said, the level of difficulty is immense because what we know about obstructions in the way to combat this type of functionality is significant. You're talking about a lot of things in the way, as well as private uses of the parcels along the way as well. So just going through the easement acquisition process would be a nightmare, let alone the kind of relocation of poles and infrastructure and everything that would be along a pathway. This is what they're saying, I don't think this is number, I think that number is much, much higher, but we'll wait to see what that is, but this is what they're proposing to us in terms of their conceptualization of it. So more to be understood, but it is one where when they do go looking for funding mechanisms, the goal for the municipalities is going to be collectively to push back and say federal funding, county funding, state funding, and then you can come talk to us, if that makes sense. As well as, you know, talking about, you know, kind of using it as a concept for developer improvements as well. So really, this is more of a who is responsible for what? So really, what we're talking about is, is they're coming to us with these kind of like seeking for due diligence and recommendations, so that's kind of what we're facilitating with D V R P C at the moment. So we're not doing the work kind of collectively as a staff led effort on their behalf. And yeah, next step, that's kind of what it is, they're going to continue to come forward. So I don't really even have a potential end date for this one, it could be one of those like long kind of arguists, we all forget about it and three years later it kind of manifests and pops back up. Still to be determined, like I said, it's too preliminary in nature for the project, but they are working on structuring in what the remaining part of the process will entail. So it's more of just a, like a, an engaged kind of discussion for now about what we want or what we'd be looking for to potentially support the township. And that's what tonight is ultimately, I don't know of other prior historical conversations about this type of function, public as well, but anything to provide feedback to the D V R P C that we might have, we might have not already mentioned. So I'll leave it open for, for comment from the board and public.
Any comments from the board?
Is there any sort of like hidden tunnel that no one knows about, like just?
Just, just the railroad tracks.
Yep.
There's, there's a significant amount of foot traffic there as well as along Baltimore Pike, primarily from the shopping center to the tough Kenan and west of tough Kenan.
And this isn't to say that the whole thing is, is out of nowhere. I mean, for most people that might not wholly understand, there already is a significant amount of pedestrian foot traffic that walks along the railroad lines today. They're going to support this with a measurement from an actual, like they have people counters, kind of laser counters that they can put along the pathway there, just to get that actual number, because it's always helpful to understand what that true demand is. But it isn't to say that this demand doesn't exist. And you can go out there any point in day and see people walking up and down the tracks.
Yep.
So it's really commuter trail, it's not a recreational trail.
If I live in Avondale and I want to go to the New Garden Plaza to go to Giant for groceries, that's what this is functionally for. And same way in the other direction for Kenan Borough residents, which right now, they come through the Pennock Park and they walk up along the side of Scarlet Road and that's their connection point to there. So we do have pedestrian foot traffic in the township, we just don't have facilities for them. And this is seen as the most connective corridor for it, because it's the, the collection of the most quote unquote urban centers for each jurisdiction.
The rail bed would be the best corridor for that, if we could get our hands on the rail bed.
Yep. Good.
Thank you, Chris.
Public. Great question. I don't know why they came forward to it. So they approached us about it, so the D V R P C, this is part of, I believe, their engagement with the county and the county is kind of directing them of like, hey, these are kind of potential projects in the county that might need some legs to get up off the ground. And from my understanding historically, there hasn't really been a lot of like D V R P C committed studies to support pedestrian or multimodal initiatives here in this area because the boroughs in this part of the county are seen as kind of like, kind of like an archipelago state, if you will, like we're not connected to like the two oh two corridor and some of those other areas that are more like connected off of the main line down into Philadelphia, we're like, we're out here. So it's like, we kind of are facilitating interconnectivity, but it's not like this is going to be like ultimately connected to some other kind of artery in Delaware and Westchester and those kind of localities, if that makes sense. Yep. Yep. Yeah, the, the climate for federal funding, not great. But it's one where this is a kind of a legacy type project, so it's one where this is for the long haul, they're looking at this as a, and you're right, D V R P C does provide that conduit to provide significant funding for these types of initiatives. And that's why we were of interest of participating, because they have a much stronger apparatus behind them than the county and obviously the township. Correct. Yep. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and that was, that came up during the discussions, because we have our mighty writers teams working on it, L H C, which is, L C H, I keep on saying, I have dyslexia, but they're, they're participating in the project, the garage is located in Avondale and Kennedy are working on it. Like I said, it's, it's being looked at across the board, it's not just municipalities that's passing it, but even in of itself, it's one where I'll kind of follow up with the Southern Chester County Regional Police, if they're actively looking at as a potential site for issues that they might experience there. So, correct, yeah. Correct. So like a lit trail or something like that for highlighting, and that would be, you know, a recommendation for it if they can achieve that.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we need an approval of the meeting minutes from the January twenty seventh, twenty twenty-five board meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes as submitted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the treasurer's report, we have paid invoices in the amount of a hundred and four thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-three cents and unpaid invoices in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and seven cents. Can I have a motion to approve such paid and unpaid invoices?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have new business, we have the zoning ordinance amendment, and my recommendation would be to table such amendment. I think the residents brought up some good thoughts, gave us some good ideas to think about, so what we'd like to do is table it for the next meeting. Any, any commentary from the board?
So a couple of things. Winnie, I think some of the concerns in the county letter are already addressed in the zoning ordinance, number one. So that, that should be our response to not only the residents, but to the county as well. The maximum size, if we were to put a parameters on the size of the facility of conditional use and used by right, would we have to re-advertise that?
Yes.
So do we want to do that? I guess that's the question for the board. And/or if we were to make it all by conditional use, we would have to re-advertise?
Yes.
However, the, the important fact is, is without allowing certain uses in the zoning, I could come in and say, I'm going to build it in Somerset Lake.
That's correct, yes.
Because we don't allow for it.
Because we don't allow for it.
Okay.
Yes.
And again, I think there was a lot of good questions, a lot of good comments. Those are my comments, I think if we're going to table it, if we're going to move it to partial conditional use, which would mean the size and scope, or if we're going to make it all conditional use, we should probably decide that this evening, or if we're going to adopt it.
I would say now is a good time to understand that as well, because we are going through the rezoning process and part of that is making sure that they align. And that is coming to a, at least a, like a more, I'll call it completeness, level of completeness at a certain point, that we'll need to just kind of structure that process. So obviously, Wednesday night will serve as a big function of people's kind of recognition of what's being done and not, so there's going to be a stay period. So if you want to align this function with that function, that it would be done by next meeting of understanding how we're going to potentially re-advertise it and adopt in April, if that makes sense. I just want to make sure that we can facilitate that from a citizen input and then a proper amount for advertisement, as well as when it makes sense to do it.
Talking about zoning ordinance or justice?
Justice.
I think justice, so, so my concern is...
But then we can make any changes to the rezoning one, too.
Correct.
Before having to kind of secure that, so we can move through the public process for that one, which is essentially supposed to start in May.
Take, I can take what people said tonight, like was interesting, and do a draft for you guys to look at, at your April meeting.
Yeah, my, my concern...
Your March meeting and then you could adopt it in April.
Okay.
With, with changes.
With changes.
If we were...
We would bring this forward as a draft document in March for saying that we addressed the issues of concern, and then that's what would be nominated for a re-advertising for that thirty day period, and then it would be ultimately adopted and its final state in April.
We have to send it back to the county planning commission.
Right. So it's tight window, but it's part of the process if you're, if you're seeking those amendments.
Yeah, so...
Should be a quick process with the county though, right? Because we would be addressing their concerns and that would be...
Correct.
The end, right?
Yeah, and then we see, obviously, if you're going to make it a conditional use, that's a change, but I don't know, given their comments, I don't know that that would be a negative reaction from them.
Okay, so if you can get us some comments and then we can get back to you.
Yeah.
And then we'll take the action on the March, whether we need to re-advertise it.
Right.
I'll second Ted's motion, if no one else has any other questions. And his motion was just to table for the season.
Do you need to know where we all stand, so that...
No, I think I, the law would allow me to talk to each of you individually.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I think we do want to get this and narrow it down so that, as Chris said, we're looking for adoption of the overall ordinance in May. And our timeframe would be for this would be March to re-advertise and then possibly re-adopt in our April meeting.
Yeah, yeah, you can do that.
Okay. Just, just so I understand what the process is. So you made a motion to table, I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have an ordinance amendment related to the Parks and Rec Board, and we also have one for the Open Space Review Board.
Both boards had a requirement of seven members, and it's turned out that it's difficult to find those seven members. So ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh two amends the Parks and Recreation Ordinance to reduce the number of board members from seven to five. So if that is agreeable, you could, it was advertised, the proof of publication is here, was advertised for tonight's meeting, and it becomes effective in five days. I'll motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh three, the same issue, that it's difficult to find members for the Open Space Review Board, that required a minimum of seven members, which the problem is, that obviously is a problem with quorums, since a quorum is based upon the number of members required. And so this reduces it from seven to five as well. So ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh three.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adopt the amendment.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have an escrow release for Copper Leaf Ridge, which is formerly the Rose Chamberlain Development on Bancroft Road. The amount of the escrow release is three hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and sixty-four cents. I have a motion to release such escrow amount?
I'll make a motion to release.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have temporary condition for nine thirty-one West Baltimore Pike. Robert, you going to take that one?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you have the memo, the property owners here, they came in with a zoning permit application and the, the project is actually a full land development. So during the process, when they came in and spoke with myself as a zoning officer, my suggestion to them was to come in with a sketch plan to see what parameters would be, you know, if, if even the project was viable at the end of the day, rather than them going through the whole, the whole process of what a, what a temporary conditional use would be allowed on the property. conditional use would be allowed on the property for them to store their equipment. As the memo says, there's four or five, like pickup trucks, maybe a skid steer, some equipment. They would put a, one or two containers on there to store their stuff, which is a permitted accessory use in the zoning district. It just has to be permitted and meet the setbacks. So that's kind of the overall, really, they're just asking, seeking a temporary approval to store their equipment there. And there's nothing that really allows for it or denies it.
What else is on the lot? I missed that.
Currently, there's an abandoned house.
Okay.
And that's the only thing.
Okay. And the zoning is?
It's a highway commercial, I believe it's on that memo.
HC.
I'm sorry, CI.
CI.
CI, and it, so a use by right in the CI is special trade contractor and building material wholesale, provided that all material and storage area completed and completely enclosed within a building or similar shelter or screened from view of adjacent properties. And the definition of a special trade contractor is a person or company trained in a special trade, such as, but not limited to, carpentry, masonry, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, excavation, or landscaping, in which they are a landscaping management company. So I would say that the use is permitted, the accessory use is permitted. They just need to go through land development, and they're seeking a temporary condition that they can operate there until they're able to go through the land development, which, as we know, is not going to be a short process. The other component to it is that one of the, one of my suggestions to them, which they did, was to reach out to PennDOT to see if they're even going to be able to get a highway occupancy permit. Even if they are permitted for the temporary, they still have to get a low-volume highway occupancy permit from PennDOT. I guess, and the Planning Commission, it's going to go in front of them Wednesday night, but it's just kind of to give guidance to myself as the zoning officer, and then as the owner.
Are they going to build something? Are they going to build a building?
Yeah, their intention is to build a building. You want to go ahead and say what? And you should have that, isn't that drawing in, was in your packet?
The use is permitted, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a permitted use. Of the building and all the stormwater, same thing we talked about for hours here.
I would make the motion to approve.
So let's just maybe make a motion to acknowledge that land development and stormwater are fine. But if all they're doing is storing equipment on there now for the business, which is a permitted use?
I guess, I guess my, my would be a timeframe. Because if we go ahead and put that temporary use on there, is that ten years for them to go through land development? Or is it a year or six months?
So who owns the property?
I do.
Size of the parcel?
I'm sorry, what's that?
What's the size of the parcel? What is it?
One point one acre.
One point one acres. This was part of the previous development plan?
I don't believe so. It's, it's, it's the abandoned house next to what I think you're referring to.
I think it's right next to like the Autozone.
Right across from Autozone.
Next to?
Two up, so more so from where the garage is.
Where you have the contractor business, it's right next door to that, towards Cannon, towards the east.
Maybe a motion authorizes zoning officer to permit parking only?
Parking only, there's...
Parking and storage on.
There's parking and the storage, the zoning ordinance, you know, the containers are required to have permits anyway, so that you could do a hundred and eighty-day permit on those, on both of them.
So my concern is like we have with the house property. If this was a residential unit, and you're converting the use, they should provide something from PennDOT.
Correct, that's...
Going to go do it.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to need to have a highway occupancy permit. We know that from PennDOT, because that was part of their, what they needed to do to satisfy at a minimum township request.
Okay.
Do you gentlemen have a timeline on when you expect this all to be accomplished? Like, let's say, when it's, the building's constructed and you're all set in there? Right. Right.
And, yeah, and stormwater, sewer, all those things are going to be part of the land.
They're also a landscaping company, so this is like coming up on, like, your season, right? Where you don't want to miss that season.
Yeah, I think the only question is, is how long?
How long would the temporary permit last?
Yeah, right.
I mean, is...
Is a year sufficient?
No parameters in ordinance for the zoning officer, just to go, yep. Nor should there be.
Six-month, six-month period of time, because that gets them through, where's that, what, six months from now? That's September, all right, maybe eight months, because that gets them past the season.
Since things take forever.
Contingent upon their submitting the application and the plans, within what kind of timeframe? For the planning, for the land development?
Their engineers is, is by the end, mid to end of summer, when he would be starting to come in for...
Plans, with an application. So that's March, so ninety days, too short? Yeah, so...
Rather err on the side of too much time than too little time?
Yeah, one hundred and twenty. Contingent upon...
Most permits are a hundred and eighty days, so can we just maybe stay consistent?
Can give them a year?
I mean, they have a vested interest, right? I mean, in getting this...
I'm just saying, when they, yeah, when they start, when they submit the land development plan. Contingent upon, this isn't permanent, so it's temporary, and contingent upon their submitting...
For a hundred, say, a hundred and eighty days.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. And that would, that would go along with the permits for the storage units. So everything would expire at the same time, or be renewed.
And they could just come back, or, and just ask for an extension, right?
Okay.
I would say that's probably the easiest way to do it.
And should we make that contingent upon their, by that hundred and eighty days, they're having applied, submitted an application for land development?
Started that land development.
Yeah.
The sketch plan's already done. I mean, that's, that's, they're allowed to come in with a sketch plan. We would just want to see something a little more formal in the hundred and eighty days.
That makes sense.
Is that sufficient time for you gentlemen? But I mean, you guys need to use it like, as of right now, right? And then, yeah, so. Can the timer start now, and then we tick on? Because if they're going to not be doing anything till summer, that's going to be three, four, five months, so that's why I'm saying it should be a year.
A year, I kind of agree.
Yeah, the caution from my, from the zoning perspective is that we're not going out so far that we're chasing people two and a half years later.
Yeah.
That got approval, you know, in twenty twenty-one.
How about a hundred and eighty days subject to a renewal, so long as they have submitted a land development app?
Yes, that...
That gives us some control.
Yeah, we could renew it as long as they've submitted.
Yeah, so you have a hundred and eighty days from now to submit that, and then that'll give you another, at least a hundred and eighty days? Okay.
There we go, that.
Agreed.
So, I think, a motion to allow a temporary permit to store equipment and storage containers on the property for a period of one hundred and eighty days, contingent upon they're having submitted an application for land development approval, under which circumstances the permit can be extended until land development approval is granted?
As outlined for this.
Okay.
Mo you have.
All right, as outlined by the...
We're not bringing, it's to keep it limited to what's in this, you know, the couple of vehicles and a couple of other pieces of equipment. We're not expanding on the whole property.
Yes.
Agreed.
As outlined and limited by your memo. That makes sense.
I'll make the motion to approve what Winnie just said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who seconded? You? All right.
It'll be a one-year...
Next, we have the fiscal year twenty twenty-five community survey.
Yeah, so part of the kind of strategy moving forward for the township as a precursor to annual budgeting process would be to structure in the ability to get collective feedback from the community about just an array of different areas, about township services, initiatives, visions, plans, you name it. One thing that's been missing is the element of a public paneling process or surveying process in the township. So this is a very common function for seeking feedback from the community, but how you do it is very important, as much as just doing it in and of itself. So we reached out to potential grouping of vendors that do provide these types of services. Granted, they do it in a different manner, and ultimately, it was one where you're ultimately trying to figure out who eliminates the most amount of bias from inputs in the study, how they collect the information. Is it, you know, mostly digital, or did it do some sort of like, you know, street-level bureaucrat-type function where they're out kind of paneling for mailers-type surveys and stuff? And so the recommended use for ETC Institute is they do that, a specific function. They kind of structure a multi-stream survey function. They seek a certain threshold of responses to get as a cross-section representative of the community, and it doesn't self-select, so they're going to send it out to the demographics, like, based off of that. So it's not just, hey, here's a link, fill it out if you're aware of it. It's intentionally sent out to be an accurate representation of the community. So it would be a full representation of our demographic, which is why it's also important that they do it in Spanish as well. So it would be a bilingual survey, and that was one where none of the other vendors had that complete function. The last element of this is its fully managed service, which is very important, considering that we don't have the staff capacity to go out and panel, you know, three to four hundred residents through a bilingual survey, to be able to get the feedback in a short amount of time, and that's what they do. They also consolidate all the information into essentially a public report that would basically give us the feedback of, this is where we're strong, this is where weaknesses need improvement, and kind of fill that into the areas for consideration for the annual budgeting process as we recognize priorities in the township for funding. So I think it's an important element to solicit community engagement, and probably one where we would bake this into an ongoing repetitive function, probably like biannually, if you will. So any sort of input from the board, but that's essentially what this recommendation is for today. And considering the vendor services, it was one where it was below the procurement threshold for RFPs, so it was essentially three vendors, we got that, it's in the actual recommendation report. But it's one where it's part of that communication strategy, so any questions?
When's the last time we did a survey?
Like this, never. We've done surveys about projects, but essentially just like online survey monkeys. We may get like fifty respondents, and then that's supposed to be telling us what we should or should not be doing.
One person could fill it out.
Correct, yeah. So you want to eliminate bias, you want to eliminate noise, and any kind of accurate paneling section of this, I'm putting on like my graduate study hat here for this one, but that's kind of what you're doing. You want a kind of a scientific correlation of information in coming from inputs that you're seeking from the community, so. Sample of this demographic of the population, if that makes sense. So if we have a community with twenty-six percent Latino community, the survey will have as of three hundred responses, twenty-six percent would be of a Latino background, if that makes sense. Sample size would be, it's arbitrary. Normally, you want to try to get at least a quarter percent, that's significant. Most surveys rarely get less than ten percent of an accurate, maybe sometimes even less than five, but it depends on the size of the municipality, which is why we landed on three to four hundred responses, yes. Because it's per household. Correct, yeah, there's no, because our population density is what it is, you're not going to get, you're not going to get like anywhere north of probably like a twenty, fifteen to twenty percent response rate. That's just surveying, yeah. It's random sample. It's mailers and digital as well, but the digital's going to be through the mailer, so that's the primary strategy. And I get that a lot from residents, they want something physical mailed to their actual, as official piece of correspondence that they can engage with. That's, you know, if you do digital-only strategy, you'll likely get that type of narrowness for the response.
Any other questions from the board? Can I have a motion to approve the survey?
Yes, I'll make a motion not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars for the community survey.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the GTRP grant, Greenway Trails and Recreation Program grant.
Correct, so this is a resubmission of the former Greenways and Trails Recreation Program grants. So to my understanding, as a feedback from DCD, this has become an incredibly competitive grant program because of its low match percentage, and apparently, there's no shortage of eligible projects in the entire Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So we decided to support Smedley Preserve Initiative through this type of grant function at probably the worst time to try to actively seek funding for it, because everyone's kind of focusing their dollars towards these types of projects. So the good news is, is we were told that we had a very strong project narrative. The issue was, is we didn't, apparently, it was interesting, because the feedback was one where we told we had a strong packet, and then the weakness was against that of not having enough of solicited support from our elected officials, even though when we said we had letters of support from our state senator and state representative, that would be sufficient enough, so they advised us incorrectly. So we're combating that by overwhelming amounts of support in this upcoming submission, so they're going to be spammed with letters of support from basically every nook and cranny that the township can think of. So that is to say that that's part of the submission timeline, is the resolution to support the grant. Submissions have opened up for this latest application window, they close in May. The projects are awarded in September. And this isn't to say that we're going to halt Smedley Preserve funding, because we just found out today as a township that we were awarded through a multimodal transportation fund grant. The township was awarded three hundred thousand dollars today to support that part of the project for the Church Road expansion, too. So we're very excited about getting the project up off the ground. So our grant strategy is working, just wouldn't happen in this one. And it's very, it's going to be very... And it's very, it's gonna be very interesting to figure out what happens with the LSA grant because that's one where there is a 0% match for that one. So I imagine it's gonna be highly competitive. But the good news is they gave us the intel of what works. So we're gonna make sure that that's the imparted with a sense of emphasis to our representative officials. So any questions?
Thanks, Chris. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution requesting the 250,000 in funding from the CFA?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have Parks and Open Space Vehicle Equipment Purchases. Is that Mike?
Evening, everyone. So we are asking, I'm asking that you approve or authorize Chris to approve the purchase orders for the F-550 vehicle for the brush chipper and the compact tractor purchase orders for the Parks Department. These three pieces of equipment were approved as part of the FY25 Park Scout Improvement Plan. So it's just part of the process. We got revised quotes and we're ready to place the purchase orders with your approval.
And just as an element of continued kind of understanding and emphasis that this is primarily supported with revenue through our open space fund as well in terms of capital implementation measures and use of that percentage of funding. So this is a part of that strategy. So this goes against open space revenue more so than capital reserve revenue for projects.
To your point, Mike, I think we already discussed this at the budgeting meeting. So I'm happy to approve the motion for the purchase of the equipment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we've got the Limestone Road to Garden Hills line of sight improvements.
So for this one here, this is a project that's kind of been in the works for a while now, but we've got to the point where we have some funding to help support the project, but big picture here is that there are some sightline limitations as you exit and enter New Garden Hills. The park is technically partially open for access to the Kalen Trail. The trailhead parking lot is located right off of that main entrance, Sarah Lime Some Road. So we do have folks that are coming to the park to access that trail. And this project would increase the sightlines per Bowman's recommendations by doing some rubbing vegetation removal and re-grading of the bank. I think the total project cost here comes in at just over $214,000. If you go back to Phase Two, kind of like traditional picnic area rehabilitation for New Garden Hills, those, that project was halted after we kind of realized the cost of the overall project. And we were able to reallocate the DCD Greenways and Trails funding from that project to apply to this project. So we'll have $100,000 put towards the efforts of improving the traffic safety here in the entrance of the park.
And this is significantly cheaper than initially discussed for the park.
It was part of the Phase Two Rehabilitation Project. So the good news was is DCD facilitated the reallocation. The bad news is that they took so long to approve it and only gave us like an eight-month period to spend the funds. So part of this is gonna be one where we're gonna work in an expedited fashion with Bowman to address the two kind of long points, which are the right-of-way and then of course, the permit as well with PennDOT. But those are unsuccessful and that's gonna be a sticky timeline. You know, we would likely have to essentially move forward with the project without support of the grant. That's the potential of it. Otherwise, can they front-load the grant to support the engineering element of it, which is non-traditional, but with the context of the project, Bowman recommended that that be considered with DCD. Other than that, it's still one of those ones like similar to the property discussion for the Hiles property. We own the site. We're liable for the line of sight. It's part of having that as an access point to the park, which it always will be. So at some point, this has to be addressed. It's just when. And right now, we have 100K to support that. So I would recommend that we move forward with the project, given certain limitations and of course, knowing that the rest of it is viable through that open space one, which is a big reason that we wanted to shift that obligation to supporting these types of projects with open space revenue was to get these types of things done without tapping into the capital fund element of it. So just wanted to kind of emphasize that this doesn't guarantee success.
Sam raised an idea about trying to make the road itself safer. Has there been any consideration of that, Chris?
For the actual roadway on.
Yeah, I know that's, that'd be a PennDOT issue.
Yeah. My understanding, there's, I mean, there's a lot of other alternatives. They're just increasingly more expensive than this one. So this is like the most viable for.
Millions of dollars, right?
Bowman, 100%, but I think based on the current traffic volume, demand for the park.
Yeah. But yes, you're right. Like, could it be subject to potential treatments that allow for a center turn and everything else? Yeah, 100%, but you're talking about a significant, significant higher expense to the township. And that's one where that would pretty much nullify the ability for us to do it for near term unless we got some sort of windfall revenue through another grant stream. And who's to say that we can't do that at some point in the future? But as it says today for this project with an expiration date on it, we're gonna work hard to see if we can get it done.
And the other thing is, this improves our site distance, number one. Number two, the turning lane is at some point in time gonna be warranted. Maybe warranted today, I don't know. But as properties on the other side, if they get developed, there will be widening and maybe that would be an opportunity to readdress this.
At some point, the Archdiocese of Wilmington will be successful in selling off the five-and-a-half acre parcel. I have no idea who's gonna do that, but best of luck to them.
Yes, so.
But they've been actively trying to shop that thing for the last two and a half years. Probably even longer than that, actually.
So I'll make a motion of an amount not to exceed $214,245 dollars for the line of sight improvements for the hills of New Garden.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we've got generator replacement. Thanks, Mike. Generator replacement for this building we're in right now.
This was part of also the FY25 Capital Plan for this year. We went out and sought the applicable Co-Stars vendors that would be able to procure the generator based off of the specifications that was studied and reviewed by not only the vendors, but also Pinoni. So this was the recommendation based off of two options. The biggest difference between them, if you see, is the lead times. For one generator, it's like eight months. The other one is about six weeks. It isn't to say that they say one is better than the other. It's just demand in the market. So that's why we've opted for the one in here today. And just to remind everybody, our original generator is at its end of life and is not even fit to serve to power the building. So we'd be lucky if the emergency backup lights ever came on or do come on in the event of a power outage. So this has been an ongoing issue for 20 years.
Any discussion from the board? Okay, is there a motion to approve replacement of the generator in the amount of?
Did you have a question?
Not to exceed 103,000.
I think so.
It's all self-contained. Yeah, they're self-contained below them. And they're generally sized based on the KW, the volume they're gonna use.
And just so we know, we even, I mean, tried to see if it could be outfitted potentially for a lateral to get in natural gas to have a naturally, and it's just not feasible. So it has to be oil-based. Anything different would be better than what we currently have, yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the?
To approve?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to the manager's report, Chris?
Yes, so I'm just gonna highlight one quick addition to the, if I can even see what I'm typing here. The township website, so through the support of our GIS project team that we commissioned last year, one thing we wanted to do was approve the ability to solicit issues or solicitation for issues from residents and businesses in the township to report on the township website. When we did migrate our website, it came with kind of inherent baked-in functionality, but the problem was it was behind the firewall of you had to create an account and actually log in and then submit an issue for a trouble ticket, which would pretty much get rid of X amount of percent of the audience that would want to engage anyway. So it wasn't seen as a very useful, user-friendly tool. So that was objective number one. Two was to make it really easy and clear about what you were reporting in the first place. So a survey questionnaire easier than kind of like, you know, using like a map-based functionality where I have to take like your pin, kind of drop it on something and then fill out things. So user experience mobile-based too as well was very of height and size. So we landed on survey 123 as a configurable item through ArcGIS online functionality that the township has through our ESRI license, and that's what we ended up doing. So if you go today on newgarden.org, you go to Report a Concern, you will land on the Report an Issue Toolset, which essentially, that's what this is. It's a very simple and easy to use dynamic tool. So if I want a community development issue around grass weeds, blight, nuisances, anything, you go there, Public Works, same thing. So it just kind of quickly changes up because the whole thing was to make this as least amount of clicks and provide as much information so that we can understand what the issue is and get you feedback on it as well. So that's another one as well. And normally, when you provide constraints about having to submit your address and contact name and email, most people will kind of hold out there, which is why we didn't restrict those fields. So it's optional to do it, but for the most part, it'll at least make us aware of the issue. Then you simply just attach an image and it's through your mobile throughput of just, you know, like a cache of photos or if you have it saved online, if you're using it from a desktop. So on the backend, what we get is rich reporting because we are code data, excuse me, data-specific. We are housing the inputs based off of categorical functions. So then we can get kind of a good pie chart built over time of where the percentage of our issues actually are in the township. And of course, we're always seeking this type of feedback so we know what we're doing well, what we need to address through increased funding. So we're not just chasing issues errantly. So this is part of a kind of a multi-pronged effort. If you can get a sense for the community survey, this is another tool to help us understand where our issues are and where to attract that from an operational efficiency standpoint. So more data, more inputs equals more intelligence about what's going on in the township. And to date, this has never been something available. So we'll have to market the actual capability. So we're gonna basically put this out on all our social media channels and other channels that we can about it being here and just continually kind of pound that drum until we get more and more adoption. But that's any new software tool. So any questions? Oh, and this is an automatic notification to that particular department. So if they select Public Works, it's Kenny email. If it's Parks, it's a Mike email and it kind of goes out accordingly. So department heads are immediately notified. Any questions? All right. We always like to make sure that it's very easy to complain about what we're doing in the township. All right. Last but not least, and this was one where as a continuation of our 25 and 25 capital kind of infrastructure planning update, this is gonna be just kind of an update on projects that we're doing as existing in-year as well as rollover projects. To get a sense for real, we'll have to eventually make an adjustment from an amendment process and likely probably sometimes towards the end of Q2 as, you know, these are projects that traverse multiple years to get them fully done in some cases, but. All right. So as I said, this is just an FY25 Capital Improvement Plan update and just giving you a sense of where we're at for what we approved as well as potential rollover, excuse me, rollover projects needed for the township. So overall, we had a bunch of an array of 15 funding initiatives for the 1.62 million. As you can see, a big part of that expense was roadway improvements. And it's one where we also have to add to this total flexa, flexible rollover project initiatives that we did not expend cash for because of just timeline shifted, things change. And we have to incorporate that into this to ultimately bump this number up to have that unspent project initiative rolled over into FY25. So that's what tonight is and just ask any questions accordingly. So with that, I said the number one issue was roadway paving and we're gonna start it this year with Hillendale Road. I know everyone loves that road and the experience that they enjoy when they drive on it and it looks like the surface of the moon. So that's what we're gonna do. These are all potholes. I don't think this has actually been updated. So there's much, much more potholes, especially after the weather storms, the winter storms, excuse me, that we had over the beginning of the year. Though it looks even worse than it even was, which I didn't think that was imaginable, but we achieved that. So we're good. So with that, a significant part of the expense is coming from that kind of interest income cash strategy as well as liquid fuels like we do for all paving projects. And it's gonna be a two-phase project. So it's also emphasizing the fact that this is probably the number one paving issue for all resident complaints in the township. We're addressing it. Two bites at the apple because it's a big expense and it's one where even the limitations about doing all the preliminary improvements that need to be done along the roadway, which is why we're doing it in two phases, if that makes sense. So the total overall expense for this project is 1.67 million. So this is just another kind of element of we are addressing our infrastructure, infrastructure issues as quickly as we can in the most immediate areas of need. And this is a reflection of that. And of course, we've.
Previously have done the bare minimum.
And that's been part of all of our budgeting slides. As you'll see, kind of a track record over time. This is historical funding for road improvement projects. And then as of like 2022, it went like this. So we are supporting infrastructure improvements in the township. But we were wholly neglecting issues in prior years. Correct, yeah. Deferrment of big capital. The deferment of capital is ultimately your biggest expense.
Yeah.
Because it only compounds down the road. It's never cheaper to do than it is today. So with that, also recording, excuse me, we're supporting the Public Works equipment capacity for some pretty significant kind of turnover for assets in the township. So this is to say that, you know, our ability to secure equipment through Co-Stars purchasing is better abated through financing. So we started that with the financing for the one replacement for the special utility vehicle. It'll be for the same ones. This has all been approved in the capital plan, fully vetted through the budget process. It's just this is coming soon, probably within the next few months as we get quotes for the remaining pieces of equipment, which I think are just the road bank and the front loader, front loader, excuse me. But nothing has changed. We're still, this is what we're forecasting. The fuel farm, if you've driven down Route 41, you'll see a bunch of like yellow fencing kind of bent around there. So part of that was basically taking this out of the ground and putting something that actually works in its place. So part of that project has already started in FY24. So this is a rollover project. We did secure some ARPA funding to support the initiative because the original estimates, what you're talking about deferment of capital. I think originally, this was like a 200-ish thousand dollar project. And then three years later, of course, through, you know, the issues with kind of kicked up the logistical cost of everything post-pandemic, you know, this is now a, you know, nearly $600,000 project, so threefold increase. So that's one where it's, like I said, because you can't forecast economic conditions, it's never cheap to do that. And then infrastructure day, you just have to make the financials work. And this is how we're able to work to do it. So this will also be a project that supports our fuel servicing for our police and fire departments as well. So it's seen as like an operational issue as well. But it's underway and should be completed in March.
Yes.
Okay. Bigger tank capacity, overall improved capacity, the FOB, the FOB ability for people to kind of log in and log out and we can do the allocations for the expenditures for the cost of gas for different entities is gonna be all there too. So you know, kind of getting us back up to speed with that because today, none of that works. Another one in terms of a rollover project, and we started with the joint permitting process, which is a fun, arduous process through PADEP. So just getting the permit approved is about a nine to 10 month lead time for the project. So this is still on track to be completed for actual construction in the fall timeframe as I was last kind of left off. So this is still on track to be completed for actual construction in the fall timeframe, as I was last kind of left off with Pinoni. But we're underway right now. It's just going through that review. So once the review is complete, then we'll kick off. And if you remember, this is just to take a culvert that's pointing in the wrong direction and point it in the right direction and expand the capacity. Because the issue right now is you have a high-volume jetting stream of water coming through the culvert underneath Mercer Road. And it's significantly, this you can see is is essentially hosing off the bank there at at overtime. And it's only getting worse and worse with more scaled weather events that we get. So hopefully with that and some some riprap, kind of repair, uh, restorations done on the site makes it a more, I'll call it structurally sound culvert there. Because the issue was is if you get the wrong storm and the right gust of wind, this whole entire road section blows out and ends up down at the bottom of Mercer Mill Road, which is not beyond the realm of possibility. Another one that's been kind of ongoing and securing a right-of-way acquisitions or easements, excuse me, for securing the sidewalk project along the Main Street section of Tough Kennaman on the southerly side. This was a project that was approved for grant funding back in twenty twenty-one. And it's been mired in the very, very, very elongated amount of right-of-way acquisitions, trying to work with property owners as well as kind of locate certain property owners. But we're getting closer to having all of the easements fully captured. And with that, you know, it will be activating the earmarked already. The funding is there for the million-dollar roughly improvement project for the sidewalk to be expanded into full ADA compliance. And essentially, the concept was to kind of connect Newark Road corner of Main Street in this area to the post office for pedestrian foot traffic. We just approved this at the about two two sections ago, so no changes here. We're just executing the plan. So no surprises here. And this is, of course, to give our parks and open space crew the capacity to be able to do the level of improvements and address the issues of need in the moment. Because if you haven't heard about township prior history of purchasing properties, we have four hundred acres of parks and open space to maintain in this township. For parks and open space as well, this was actually already completed. So it's just essentially kind of closing out the project. But it's the stream restoration project that was conducted in December timeframe. I think it was completed. It's fully complete. You can go out there, enjoy the sidewalk. And it's successful in the fact that we also got grant funding to support it. But it was kind of a low-hanging fruit out there, not to get rid of all the water sheeting that happens there, but make sure that the entire, I think it was like a gravel walkway area isn't completely put into the stream after every single storm. The Quonset Hut, I know people will miss this kind of, it was like ship lap or something. But essentially, the the aesthetic of the outside of the skin of the Quonset Hut is going to be changed through some painting, some facilitation for covering the reskining the actual roof. And what's that stuff? Asbestos. That's it. We got to remove all that asbestos. So the remediation project has essentially been finalized. The actual cost came upwards for some of that removal part of it. But it's one where that was seen as a new garden park improvement because it's kind of the gateway of a park. It's the first thing you see when you come in. And it's leveraged by public works. It's leveraged by the the Little League and it's also leveraged by the the Township Parks Crew. So this one should be moving forward. The final delivery is still tentative for March timeframe, so expect that. And I forgot what what's the color for it going to be? Cabernet red. There you go. Nice wine color. Kind of like a red barn. So say goodbye to this very lovely exterior, the rusted door and everything. Charming. We already talked about this last one, no real updates. So just if you have any other kind of feedback about it. But this was seen as the best cost-effective measure to improve line of sight based off the fact that we have a ticking kind of clock against an expiring grant and to proceed forward kind of in a possible alternative approach. Should that be something that we decide not to pursue if that expiration date hits a final alley? So we're going to pursue this moving forward. If you haven't familiarized yourself with the Smedley Preserve Master Plan, we bought a golf course. We're trying to restore that golf course into a kind of preserve function to serve as a kind of a walking amenity that you would be able to drive to park off of Church Road. And this is part of that execution plan. So the announced funding and the resolution for the grant today support this project. And it's part of kind of in two buckets of costs. One of them is like regardless, this includes the engineering and design, but you have like the public access phase, which improves all of the pedestrian facilities as the crosswalk contingent connecting the two properties. Because there is a pen dot road kind of going through the middle of them as well as the 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 parking facilities, the kiosks, all the signage, the wayfinding, everything. When you put a park on was a hundred and six acres. It's just a lot of stuff over big space. So it's just that kind of little bites at the apple adds up over. So that's what we're currently addressing through the use of a grant-led strategy with supplemental supporting matching funds coming from the open space fund. So this is kind of seen as a no cost to the property taxpayer, if you will. But it is part of our earned income tax mill, excuse me, percentage. So that's it. We just heard about the multimodal, so we got our grant funding of three hundred thousand there. So we're off the races. Of course, they'll be going through initial engineering and design and improvements to. This is basically to address those pedestrian improvements. So along Church Road, we'll put in kind of what you were talking about for limestone, like a like a center lane kind of median to kind of calm traffic going into that corridor as well as kind of LED kind of flashing stop signage to get people to understand that they're going through a pedestrian facility. You know, those types of improvements there for it to make sure that it is functionally safe and that we are addressing all of the issues for that crossing. And then we're going to have to wait for this L S A grant, which this, like I said, is going to be really competitive because it's up to a million dollars with no match. So everybody in Pennsylvania is going to apply for it. And we'll see what we get back in return. But of course, our project's the best. But that's going to be to essentially address a lot of the centralized parking function here. And then as we can address it with supplemental funding over time would be to take the cart path and just essentially make sure that it is like fully conditioned for functional use into the future, like eliminate tripping hazards, bridges and stuff of that manner, if that makes sense. Because that's of the entire itemized list of park initiatives, that's the most expensive one. So it's one where on its existing state, other than repairing the bridges, it's not an immediate need, but we would like to address it over time. Of course, not on this slide, but would be in a supplemental one would be the rehabilitation of the actual overall forested site. So it's one where not the most pressing need to do right up front. But over a hundred and six acres, if you were to take golf fairways and turn it into kind of what we all love, which is that Chester County high prairie grass and like different trees that in of itself over a hundred and six acres, that's what all this represents. It's just different types of vegetation. That is like a one point three million dollar project. And then if you haven't noticed, we did replace the roof. We're waiting for kind of some of the conditions of settling to occur because we finished the project or got to a point where we're close to finishing the project. And then that was done during that very seasonal but enjoyable eighty-degree period that we had in mid-October. And then, of course, the temperatures plummeted, the winds and all the storms kind of came through. And it's caused interruptions by not letting kind of the asphalt shingles to kind of fully settle and secure and see in its place. So we're kind of not finalizing the project. We're working with the vendor to kind of address little nitty-gritty issues like the windstorm that came through was like like a Sunday and a half ago, where we had like sixty mile an hour gust gale force winds come through here. And of course, this building is essentially like a blockade on the upper side of a a wind tunnel, if you will. So of course, the roof takes a significant blunt of the damage there. Great design. And it's just been one where we have to wait to close out the project by making sure that it's been fully approved or at least given the sense of approval from our building, our commercial building inspector. So that's what we're rating on. So technically, that makes it a rollover project, even though it's pretty much ninety-eight percent complete. And of course, the generator from tonight looks great. The fleet program is just ongoing, so that's part of the ability to give our staff the ability to get out and kind of do a lot of their commercial inspections and farm marshal inspections and property inspections and just a lot of inspections. And then these are some renewed kind of admin priorities that were brought about. So we're actually working with the county right now to utilize their hazard mitigation planning process to template out the H M P as well as adopt a bit to do an E O P without having to have that like duplicative effort. So that kind of eliminates some of the need to go through that function. So we would reallocate that potential funding into other initiatives. So I would say one of the biggest ones that we need to address as a township is our recordation and storage, which was seen as an F Y twenty-six initiative and pull that to the left. If you were to go downstairs in the basement right now, it's a catacomb of files that have been collected over time. The scrolls of Alexandria, whatever you want to call it, is it's a, it's a, it's a risk over time for the township to carry that much documentation to facility that's housed in drawers and bureaus. So at some point, digitization of those files would be, number one, just to remove the overall footprint demand on storage because every other closet, nook and cranny is already filled in the basement. It's all we have left. But it's also one where you could have better ease of access to give reduced staff time to be able to seek records for our right-to-know policy and everything else about getting context and details about parcel files for, you know, future zoning officers as well. So this is seen as kind of like a modernization strategy, if you will. And so this isn't to say you're approving the site. It's an update. This will come forward in a future meeting. But it's just a recommendation that it might make sense to kind of reduce former priorities of need and repatriate funding to address future priorities because this level of effort is not going away. And it's going to take almost fifty-five hundred personnel hours just to do it. So it's one where it's a significant project and no one's going to be able to really do that on staff to dedicate that amount of time. There's two thousand and eighty hours in a personnel year, so that's two years of a single person doing a job. So it's one where seeking a vendor services, probably the only way that's ever going to get done in a professional manner that it has to be done as well. Because it's a the technical thing you're doing because you're not just scanning and digitizing. You're also building out that digital inventory as well, though by parcel file, building out a SharePoint, all that fun stuff. Then other things that are ongoing projects, I think this is almost the last slide here. These are just the ongoing projects that we have that we kicked off in the beginning of twenty twenty-four. So our act two oh nine that we went over tonight, it's just a continuation. We're almost at the pretty much the exact halfway point. As well, our zoning map and ordinance update, which I still, like I said, encourage everybody to come out on Wednesday to see all the hard work that we put into it. But these are just to say that, and these were anticipated and budgeted as rollover projects. So essentially, it's just reflection of that in the F Y twenty-five capital plan. So with that, just kind of itemizing out that we're for rollover, we kind of already highlighted them, so they total up. And essentially, this was all kind of earmarked for unspent cash that were adjudicated, or excuse me, allocated for these projects in twenty-four. So the anticipation would be to get a future amendment process in place to be able to reallocate that funding for the twenty-five side. So just expect that in probably sometime in early June or in June for the June meeting. And any questions? Try to do that as fast as I could and try to make it before ten o'clock.
Anything else the board wants to talk about?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
On what specifically? Better than not spending any money like you did while you were supervisor, right? Okay. Like all those roads you paved. Apologies.
Just to clarify, the significant portion of this funding is coming from the generation of interest income from the remaining amounts of the sewer sale. So we're using that as a diminishing return of a potential use of interest. So the these projects aren't going away, but that interest is. And at some point, that's what we talked about tonight, scaling up revenues from other endeavors through development would replace the potential for having to have it be funded through future tax increases in the township and the ability to not use it coming from our sewer investment fund as well. And the goal would be to take that and re-invest it into the principal and grow that over time. So it'd be nice to kind of build that up as a a legacy fund for the township to have, not necessarily for the use in the next five, ten years, but twenty, thirty, fifty years because you never know when you're going to have to have that type of need. So just making sure everybody understands this is, it's a multi-revenue stream. This isn't just dwindling cash down to a termination point. Of course, please look at all of our budget documents that say all the same things that we talked about two years in a row.
That's why you heard a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?